Morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the 9:00 AM meeting of the Supplemental Retirement Board of Trustees. As I called meeting to order, I sit on the 12 or 13 other boards and one of them is meeting at 10 o'clock that I may have to step out for about five minutes, but I'll hand the gavel over and we'll proceed. This is Global Transport Board, so with that, I'd like to welcome everybody. I called meeting to order if you'll stand to join us for our collective allegiance and our selection of the top five.
Let's lead this to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of North Carolina, and bless the Old North State of loyalty and faith.
As many of you know, we had four officers who were murdered in ambush in Charlotte, North Carolina a few weeks ago, and we will adjourn our meeting in honor of them. Two of them were state employees who were participants in our plan, one Charlotte police officer, another participant as well as a federal marshal, so please keep those families and communities in our meeting. As a reminder, we have a public comment section. If anybody wishes to sign up for public comment, please notify Patty or sign up for the public comment section. Please note this meeting being recorded, posted online. As with other board materials, we ask you to use your phone, those of you joined remotely when not speaking. We'll call, we'll call by name unless there's an objection. Anybody who makes a motion or seconded a motion will be considered as a vote. Please always state your name before speaking, especially those remotely. Finally, any texts or recorded communication between board members during the meeting, even phones are considered public records to the extent that they concern the meeting. With that, I'll ask the treasurer, the secretary to call the role. Treasurer Falwell?
Here.
Mr. Bella Thomas?
Present.
Lorraine Johnson?
Present.
James Lumpston?
Present.
Greg Patterson?
Here.
Bob Shea?
Here.
Nels Roseland?
Here.
Steve Bean?
Here.
And Robert Hillman. Robert Hillman. We have a quorum. Did Lorraine say yes? She did, okay. Somewhere in this meeting, I'll be discussing something that's the next treasurer in North Carolina will be dealing with as well as taxpayers called the Federal Savers Match. Now, you could be hearing a lot about that over the next couple of years, and I think I'm mentioning Lorraine because I think it's going to take the collective effort of this board to understand how this may impact our participants, so.
The treasurer just, you know, this is Lorraine, treasurer, just to let you know, I am at home on my PC instead of in the car, and no one else is with me.
Okay, thank you. And so with that, we have a quorum. Please take a moment to review the closed agenda. Does anyone have an actual potential or comparison for conflict ventures regarding matters or force? Hearing none, should any conflict arise during our meeting, please let me know. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 22nd. Motion second being made. Any further discussion? If not, call the role. Treasurer Falwell?
Yes.
Mr. Bella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Let me retract that, please.
Yeah.
Is there any objection to combining the approval of? Those subcommittees are different. Can I combine those or not?
Can we combine those? Yes. Hearing no objection, I'd like for another to repeat your motion to approve the meeting minutes of the subcommittee as well as the board. Yes. Second repeated. Thank you. Any objection? Hearing none, the court call the role to approve both meeting minutes. Got it? Sorry. Mr. Falwell, yes. Javella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumpston?
Aye.
Bob Shea? Aye. Nels Roseland?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman. With that, we'll now hand it over to Jeff to talk about administration.
Great, thank you. What you have in your materials, we have our proposed budget for the 2024 and 2025 fiscal year. As you will recall from our last board meeting, the board did elect to have a fee holiday, and so the budget shows that there are no asset-based administrative fees that are going to be assessed on the plan balances. And as we mentioned before, that will be reviewed during the first quarter board meeting of 2025. The current assets in the plan as of March were 14.8 billion in the NC 401K and 1.9 billion in the NC 457 plan. For budgeting purposes, we did not, we assumed that the growth on the plans would be zero. In terms of our fee reserve account, the combined fee reserves were about $9.3 million for both plans. Those monies are invested in the Stable Value Fund. The plan's staff performs work for the NC ABLE program. As a result of that, the SRP group is reimbursed out of the NC ABLE budget in an amount of approximately $110,000 each year. You can kind of see the time breakdown of the staff and their time spent on the NC ABLE program. On the following page, you can see some of the benefits that we assume for the NC retirement were about 24.04%. For Social Security, Medicare, that's 7.65%, and for the state health plan, that's a little over $8,000 per staff. We also have an allocation to some overhead in terms of the Financial Operations Division, the IT Division, and the General Administrative Division. Looking at the revenue projections for the year, you can see, again, the balances in the reserve account, it's a little over 8.1 million for the 401K, about 1.1 million for the NC 457 plan. Again, we are showing no revenues collected as a result of our fee holiday. We're also showing estimated interest to be earned in the Stable Value Fund, and that crediting rate as of earlier this year was 3.02%. So that resulted in about $220,000 to the NC 401K and about $32,000 to the NC 457. As we have mentioned in prior meetings, our estimated float on checks awaiting presentment have become a larger number and a much more meaningful number. Those combined are about $1.2 million on an annual basis based on the current level of interest rates. So that's a little over $1 million to the NC 401K and about $144,000 to the NC 457 plan. When we look at what our projected expenditures are in the budget, which is about $2.4 million for the year, we project that we will have a balance in our fee reserves, a little over $8 million, that's 7.3 million for the 401K, and a little over $1 million for the 457 plan. So really, the main changes that you'll see in the budget year over year, there's changes in the personnel expenses. That's really due to a change at the restructuring of several positions that had a prior allocation to the SRP team and their associated benefits. Additionally, you'll see that there was an increase in our audit fee, and that's according to year three of our audit engagement. We also had an increase in our proxy voting service due to the voting services for the commingled funds. The big increase you'll see here, and it is as a result of a proposed project, but back in the first quarter board meeting, Callan presented the suitability of the glide path on the Goalmaker service, and it was recommended to the board that we take a deeper dive on that. And so what I have included in here, and you'll see this in a little bit more detail later, presented by Callan, but we have a Phase One project that would evaluate Goalmaker versus target date funds, as well as looking at the glide path currently to see if it is optimized. And that would come at a cost of about $45,000 if the board were to choose to do that work. Coming out of that, there are certain decisions that may be made, and out of those decisions, the board could choose to do some follow-on work with a outside cost of $130,000 for Phase Two if the board were to so choose that. I did include that in there. You know, again, if the board were to choose this, timing is something else that the board would need to discuss on when they would want to do that, but I felt it prudent to include that in the proposed budget in case the board wants to pursue those works. So let me pause there, see if there's any questions on the proposed budget.
Yes, sir. And one question, I'm just curious, under your expenditure assumptions, the retirement contribution was 24.04%. Is that high, not higher than, is that normal?
Yes.
Is that standard across the system now?
That is what is in the legislative budget.
Okay.
It was actually, it was actually a little bit higher last year.
Okay. Which employer contribution are you referring to? Pardon? Which employer contribution? That's what I was just wondering, what that, what all that was?
It's for, it's for retirements, for the pension, and it's for...
The pensions, though.
It's pension, it's health coverage.
Well, the health coverage is separate, yeah.
Well, no, it's part of it.
Okay.
And health coverage, health coverage for our employees is one thing, but health coverage that is also paid by the employer for retirees, so there are two, there's actually two health charges.
Yeah.
And then also disability income plan, death benefits, all that's rolled up into that number.
At 24%.
Right.
Okay.
There's a few basis points for disability and that kind of thing, but to kind of level set, Steve, because he's been dealing with this number for decades, the employer contribution specifically for the pension plan is 16.8.
Right, so it was somewhere around there.
It's about 16.8, just for the pension.
Yeah. I was thinking that was lower, so that's why I was curious, why the 24.
Yeah, and as you've read, we've put forth a proposal for them to start possibly going to 401K match. They're not going to do that, but it needed to be said, so. As far as the Callan proposal, I'm not too keen on, I appreciate Callan presenting this to us. I think it's something, even though it's in our budget, we need to do more consideration about not just the cost of doing it, but where will it be, where will it end, what other kinds of decisions will have to be made. So I appreciate the memorandum that Callan provided. I'm not sure now is the greatest time to be embarking on that, but I obviously would entertain any ideas that the board might have about that topic. Any other questions regarding the budget?
Just a quick comment. I think it's amazing that your flow can cover almost half your expenses. Couldn't say that five years ago. That's the magic of interest rates.
It's amazing our economy is still percolating at that level.
Yeah.
Stunning to me. All right. Any other questions? Just to be clear, the Callan proposal is in the budget. We're being asked to approve the budget. Doesn't mean that we're, by approving the budget, that you're approving the engagement for this particular thing.
That is a, that is a separate vote that would occur later.
Okay.
In the meeting.
Okay. All right.
We do have to...
Do you want to hear a motion to accept the budget?
No move.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Bella.
Thank you, Javella. Any further discussion? Hearing that, court call the role. Treasurer Falwell?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumpston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Aye.
Bob Shea?
Aye.
Nels Roseland?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman.
Next, just want to give an update, an update on the transition from the Prudential platform over to the Empower platform that occurred early in, early in February of this year as we had.
I don't know if board members have been hearing about the transition or some of the problems that our customers are having with the transition. So I know that oftentimes when on boards, when you hear the word transition, sometimes you can zone out. This is not one of those times. I think it's very important to focus on where we were, where we are, what did or did not happen, and the Herculean efforts that some internally have had to go through in order to, in order to get this working is in addition to the impact that it's had on our call center with the transitions. Go ahead.
Yeah, so as we, as we reported at the first quarter board meeting, in terms of actually moving all the records over from the legacy Prue system to the Empower system, all of that went very, very well. All of the numbers ticked and tied and balanced out. So again, that all went very, very well. Where we have seen some concerns and issues have mainly been around delays in payrolls, and most of that came as a result of several of our employers. I think we have about 40 employers that have multiple payroll frequencies.
Christie here?
I think she's on the line.
Christie, are you in the building?
Yes, I am.
Can you join us as a person, or is there a reason?
Oh, yes, I can come down. I'll be down in a second.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
As I was mentioning, where we saw most of the issues were with our employers that had, that had multiple payroll frequencies. On the legacy Prue system, they did not rely on having the payroll frequency in the payroll file, but the Empower system did. So as a lot of those payroll files were received and processed, they did not post to the proper subset, and therefore, from an employer and participant, and a participant on a perspective, it looked as if some of those monies had not been received and posted. And so we had a lot of complaints and concerns around that issue. We've worked with the Empower team on that, and gotten, I think, pretty much all of those resolved. We have a couple that are still outstanding, but by and large, all of that is resolved. Now, Empower did reach out to our employers late last year that had the multi-frequency payments to alert them that payroll frequency would need to be added to the files. Some of our employers did respond to that, some did not respond timely, which led to some of those delays. So again, I think we are on the tail end of that issue, but that was probably one of the biggest concerns that we faced there. As well as coming out of the transition, we saw longer hold times in the call center. And again, I think that was as a result of the forecast of the volume not being aligned with the actual volume that they experienced. And so Empower has added staff to that, and as a result of that, those wait times have come down. Another issue we saw was we have a, we have a quick enrollment process whereby somebody can click on that and it would automatically enroll in that 6%. We had a lot of our participants that confused that 6% with the pension 6%. As a result of that, we've made the decision to change that quick default to a, to 4% to make a distinction between those two. You know, a lot of that has led to, you know, an increased time, as the treasurer was mentioning on the staff here, as we work with our participants and our employers through those issues. We also saw some lag time in the mobile application as well as the website. Empower has embarked upon a project to review that, to look at the resources that are being applied there, and they are committed to fixing that and adding resources. With that said, Christie, would you like to speak to some of the communication issues that we had experienced post-transition?
Before, before she goes into that, do you mind touching on loans and missed earnings, that sort of, that topic, or is that, is that something?
So, yeah, that, no, so they can certainly touch on that, but that's kind of, along with the, along with the payrolls, where there have been late or delayed payrolls, any missed earnings that a person would have experienced, that is going to be made up. We've gone through those and identified each case where if it was, if it was the fault of Empower, Empower has already made up those missed earnings. If it was an employer error, then we're working with those employers to make up those missed earnings. Is that what you were...
Yeah, so...
You want to come up?
Sure.
Come out so people can hear you.
Sure. So communications-wise, we did start communicating about migration early before it actually occurred. We probably could have started a little bit earlier, but we did put information in the newsletter. We've had webinars. You know, not everybody reads everything, so even though we had a few different touch points on getting the information out to people, which include our field team, they went out and met with employers and individuals as well. Not everybody reads all of the material or recognizes that they need to take action. So we have firsthand experience of taking action and what that meant and the process that people actually had to go through to re-register their account. In reaction to that, unfortunately, we weren't necessarily as proactive as we should have been, but in reaction to that, we did do additional things, and that included banners on our website, additional communications with our field team in Empower, just to make sure that people recognize the importance of re-registering their account.
You know, one thing that I would like to recognize, you know, this was, you know, when you look at the number, the number of employers, we have over 1,000 and over 350,000 participants, this was a pretty mammoth project. And while there have been bumps, you know, overall, and I think by and large, you know, things have gone well. You know, as you mentioned, there's things that we probably could have done better in hindsight. We could have started earlier on some things, maybe communicated more. But again, you know, it's not, not without, without, without the expectation that we would have some bumps, but again, I think by and large, a project of this size and magnitude, things did, things did go well. I know that, I know that the Empower team will also, you know, address this as well. And so I'll, Rob, if you want to go ahead and just maybe, you know, address now...
Let me, let me just ask a couple of questions for you. Come on up, it's fine. Sit beside Christie. Christie, what, we have to do some, well, let me back way up. Calls I was getting are from across the state. People couldn't access their accounts, so we can talk about pay frequency differences and all kinds of things like that, but people couldn't access their accounts. So before Empower, what percentage of our participants logged on to their accounts generally?
In the, in the legacy Prue world, we had about 60% of our participants that had registered their accounts.
Whether they logged on or not?
Whether they logged on or not.
Okay. And then where are we now?
We are at about 27%, and we're about, we're about three and a half months in post-transition. So we're about, we're about 50% of where we were three and a half months in.
And I don't mean this critically. I'm just, I think the board serves to have some baselines here. So if you don't register, you can't, you can't access your account, right?
Well, part of, part of accessing your account for the first time, you actually register your account, so it's part of logging on for the first time on the new system.
Right, but you can't access your account unless you're registered with the new system.
Correct.
And right now, we're below 30%. Okay. Christie, you want to sort of elaborate what I was leading to and then about things you had to do, not verbally, but maybe not coding, but things you had to do in the system that were making it fussy for people, that you shared with me?
Were you talking about the website being brought back in-house?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so...
What necessitated that? What happened?
Yeah, there were just, I mean, Empower, of course, has a new set of rules that they're working with, and so one of the things that we saw, so traditionally Prudential hosted our forward-facing website, which gives information about the plans, and participants can then log in. With Empower, they did the same. However, when you went to the website on anything lower than a desktop, it forced you to download the app in order to get any information. There were some issues with what we could and could not update and present to our members in terms of information. And so we decided to go ahead and take the website MyNC Plans in-house, so it's now hosted on myncretirement.com, where we have a little more freedom in terms of timeliness of communication and what we can promote. I can say, when we first started that interaction that we had with Empower, we were at about 13% registration. In response to that, we did some additional things on our website, made sure that the team knew we really needed to bump this up, and that's when we bumped up to this 27%. So that even had an impact, and I think that that was because we were able to take it in-house, we were able to control the message a little better and more timely, and so I think that's a positive.
So I'm not the tech person, everybody in this room knows that, but take something this big in-house, seems like a bigger lift than what you just described.
It's not the entire website.
Yeah, so it's not the participant side where you log in and you see your money. That is with them because that is security. That's all about...
Sure.
The banking interaction. But ours is a forward-facing, marketing-style website where we can control that messaging, where we can make updates at a time. And then from there, people can go and log in, have clear instructions about what they need to do based on our interaction.
Okay. Then lastly, will we always have it in-house, the marketing side?
I believe so. I mean, I think it just works in our favor, and I think it makes more sense to have everything about members' retirement in one place, so they're not entering, exiting, going somewhere else. It just makes a little more sense.
So the expense of this bringing it in-house, is that an expense that we were paying Empower for that we're now incurring?
So that is a part...
How's that being balanced?
Yeah, so that is a part of our communications budget, and that is something I am working with Empower on right now. We're breaking out...
Empower for that we're now incurring?
So that is.
How's that how's that being balanced?
Yeah, so that is a part of our communications budget, and that is something I am working with Empower on right now. We're breaking out and diving deep into the breakdowns of what that service has cost, whether that means we apply that to another communication effort, or it becomes money that we take back. Yeah, we're working on that.
I dominate the questions. Anybody virtually or in person have any questions for Kristi? I appreciate you staying, but go ahead. Just for simplicity, is there a simple link on both page, Empower and you? You can transfer back and forth?
To log in?
Log in?
Yes.
Okay. So that sometimes makes it easier, back and forth links?
Yes, we do.
But was that always the case?
That was pretty much the case. I, yeah. But again, it's simplified a little bit.
Proceed, go ahead.
Thank you. So first of all, these guys are being kind because they did a lot of extra work, as you said, treasurer, and it probably wouldn't be the place we're in right now if they didn't do so much work. I have to say that. And also, there's more work to come, so there's still a lot of things to work on. Overwhelmingly, I agree with Jeff, things worked extremely well for the plan when you think of it in total. It was very expected that those registrations would have to ramp up again because people have to register on, we believe, a much better website, a much better app, fully functioning. We didn't have that before. Everything is in Spanish, not just a page here or there. So there's a lot of benefits to it, but like any new migration to a new system, it's an opportunity where you, that sounds nice, but it's a it's you need to go ahead and re-register. It's a chance to also be better with your passwords and all those kind of things. So there's so there's a big push now to get people, because we would love more people registered, because then that takes pressure off the call center, because that's usually where someone goes then, where they were using an app or they were using their their website, now they're picking up the phone. So, you know, that has also helped create the the wait times that we longer than we would have wanted. So we are also very interested in having self-serve again in an environment that we feel is much better than they had before. But having said that, new is new, right? So so I just want to say.
Are your other transitions around the country where we where we unique?
Well, we're going to go through some of that, so I thought it was important, and I don't want to take away from what Jeff just said, and again, I thought you got it, that was very balanced, but they were nice to us. So but we have a lot of work yet to do with the team, and I think we're working through it. You guys are great partners. But I thought it was important to to kind of talk to the board a little bit about kind of three things. One is a migration in total, so you get a feel for what other clients beyond yourself kind of dealt and felt with, because I think that's important. Also, two kind of how Empower's doing in general, because that's kind of the BAU you're going into, so I want to give some flavor for that. I can try to be really quick, I know we're short on time. And then also, a little bit about if we have time, just I'm seeing in other government clients, because we see, you know, we have a lot of other other clients that I was going to just kind of give a little bit of information on. Because now Empower now has 30 state plans at this point, now with the Prudential business being added. And I'm I was part of Prudential, I was here many years ago, I've been here for years, I now lead the government RM team, Mike is on my team. So a lot of our, I'm happy to say my entire team is state intact. So, you know, the kind of the Prue folks, everyone that our clients know are still here, we had a couple of retirements or otherwise, everyone is is still here. So we look at the migration in total, one over two years, right? So we moved 2,800 clients in four different waves. You guys were the last wave, we did it purposefully, in the least complex to the most complex, which we learned a lot from every wave that we that we moved. 4.1 million participants were moved, at $310 billion in assets. And as Jeff said, it footed out to them, not an auditor, but 00000 something, so literally pennies out of $310 billion in assets, which we felt very good about. Over those two years, we added 190 new capabilities to Empower's platform, Goldmaker, enhanced Goldmaker being one of them, taking over 400,000 hours of system development to to kind of prepare for the for the Prue business to be added. Importantly, during this time, Empower as a business, we retained over 90% of all the Prudential business that was part of the transaction. The deal, which was public, provided an estimate of 83% for undertakings like this, that's what the that's what was anticipated to stick over 90%, 90% of plans did. This was, by the way, many in the industry are saying this is the largest of these transactions that has happened to date. That's how big of a deal this was. I'm happy to say, in the government market, so my my market, we retained 99% of our clients. We had one small West Coast client that at the beginning, when this was announced, decided to leave. They didn't leave through the process, they left early on. So we're at 99% of our government business, Prudential government business being retained to date. So again, we do continue to work through a number of items. I also thought it was important to understand that, you know, Empower as an ongoing entity, so give just a couple of quick stats. So Empower in general is at a 98% client retention, so that's even with, because there were a lot of industry folks saying, with Empower concentrating on Prudential's business, things could have slipped somewhere else. Well, things did not slip anywhere else in Empower. We're still running at 98% client retention. We have record sales in the same period. We sold about 4,000 plans, 300 government plans. Our nearest competitor, we believe, sells around 80 to maybe 100 top, so we're set, we're we're growing at at twice the rate of our nearest competitors. We've also maintained on that book that Empower has a 99.99% accuracy in our transactions while all this was going on. We also just did a recent client survey, we did two surveys. We did one survey of our clients that migrated, and we're working through that. We've got some some challenging comments here or there with participants not being able to register, dealing with that. But Empower's in-force book of our clients gave us a net promoter score higher than we've ever had before. It's gone up to now 79, it was 76 before, and if I don't know if I've ever explained it, NPS, net promoter score, you can get between minus 100 and positive 100. A zero is considered pretty much average, 50 is considered exceptional, we're at 79, which is world-class. In order to get a a positive net promoter score, you need to have, the clients need to give you either a nine or a 10 out of 10, and be willing to recommend you. So we're feeling good about the about the Empower platform and the Empower book of clients.
Call center surveys that I got through emails started with, "Empower sucks." And why did you do this to us?
For the for the migration, yes. So it's like, I said that we.
So I'm just repeating what the email says. Lots and lots of times, so.
I'm trying to give more of a flavor of, hopefully, once we get through this, that we're that we'll be more on par with with where our book is. But yes, the the process from there to here has been has been bumpy, for sure. The call center, for example?
They're blaming us for this transition. They're blaming this board for doing this to them. I have to defend the board because we had, we were involuntary participants in this, so.
And I'll add, you've done, especially your team has done a great job in helping it be better than it even would have been otherwise, for sure. Again, it's, anything new to participants is going to be a challenge to get. I've tried to, hopefully, we see we're more at BAU, we get more people registered, they will be getting more of the Empower experience. The call center, for example, our call center in general has a 99% first call resolution, 75% of calls answered within five seconds. When the migration for the migration process, we had to run two call centers, because we had to run the old Prudential system up until the plans migrated over, we had to keep that staffed, and then reduce staff at a proportional level while plans were moving over. Now that we're all on one platform, all those reps came over now to one platform, so it's made it makes the world a much better place. But those people also had to be trained, because they were 100% dedicated to that Prudential platform prior. So kind of moving them over, there's training. And in addition to those folks coming over, we're hiring 110 new call center representatives between now and and June. We're also adding another 100 just to assist with tech calls, because that's where we believe, again, the bigger biggest opportunity is, is that person that said, "I was always an online person, I was always on the app, I was always on the web." I'm confused. I now what now is everything's new, instead of clogging those up in a in a normal call center, we're going to have a call center, 100 people, we're at it just to help those people navigate, get registered, and understand how to use a new a new website, a new app, which is fully functional when Prudential's wasn't, by the way. We feel that's going to pay dividends, because again, once we once we get a person back to self-service, then of course, everyone benefits, the participant benefits, we benefit, so ready.
And they're working two jobs, and they're having a hard time making enhancements, and they may need a loan out of their account. And you just got to break this down to humans.
We do understand, and again, it helps helps all of us to do that, so that's it, that's being ramped up as we speak. And also, at this time, there's, you know, if you think of it from a record-keeping standpoint, one of the reasons that transactions like Prudential happen is because this business is getting much more complicated, just with Secure 2.0, for example, which we're all kind of heard a lot about. Empower so far has already spent a number of 65 million, and we probably have another 50 million yet to spend on just one upgrade, which makes this business, record-keeping business so complex, and why scale is just so important. You know, subscale providers are not able to exist. We already had a provider, for example, call us and say, "We can't do this anymore." They're they're a decent-sized provider that said, "We want to keep relationships, but we can't do the record-keeping because it's too complex and expensive to upgrade." They're giving us their business, because it's 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 a very cost-intensive and complex business if you're not if you're not at scale to spread out that 65 or 100 million dollar cost just to do upgrades for something like Secure 2.0. So also, I wanted to just give, and I'll obviously take any questions, but you know, in the coming year, a couple of enhancements are coming. We're doing an entirely new workflow system to make it easier for clients to work directly with us and to know where things stand. You can see things in real time as as you kind of submit transactions to us. So again, there's things that we, the scale is allowing us to build, to to make our clients and our participants' lives better, and that's one of the reasons why this transaction was done, so we could do that kind of investment. We're also building a new diversity, equity, belonging, and inclusion enhancement, where we're the first in the industry to be able to add new technology to our platform, where clients that are able to give us demographic information about their participants, we're able to take that, put it on our record-keeping system, and provide much more detailed reporting based on how different cohorts are are kind of doing, you know, in the state. So I think it's one of the first to do that.
Did you say DEI?
Yes.
Well, you're kind of tone deaf, because there's a lot of swirl going on in this state about DEI right now. So people have different opinions about it.
Yeah, this isn't even taking an opinion, it's more of just understanding, I think as a board and as a as a firm, I think it's important to understand kind of potentially where there's opportunities. I think you can do your own study years ago based on on poverty rates as well. So I think it's things like that, understanding the participant base in a different, in a more, in a better way, helps. That's what I mean by it, actually. And also, just, you know, from a government perspective, you mentioned loans. Across the board, we're seeing an increase in loans. It's not a surprise, people are, credit cards are maxed out, futures rates are really high, it's harder to get a home equity loan, some, you know, you don't ask for a credit score, you take a loan from your own account, you're paying yourself back. Across the board, we're seeing those those loans increase. Clearly, we want to educate and help people not do that, but it's it's kind of the way of the world these days, so not surprising. Also seeing a negative cash flow in most of our government plans, more people leaving, more money going out than coming in. There's a brain drain in a lot of governments, where there's people that were here for a very long time and have a lot of knowledge, and they're able to retire, and they are. So we're seeing, you know, an extraordinary amount of hiring happening, but of course, there are new people coming in, they're they're not as experienced, so there's an opportunity that you need to kind of get those people up up to that same experience level.
Money going out and coming in?
More money, yes. That's that's common across every government that we deal with.
We have the same issue with our plans.
Yes, and it's one of the reasons why, you know, more efforts that.
All the money that goes in his plans every month, more money going out.
Yes.
Yes.
It's an industry issue that, again, we see the number of retirements of people that are able to retire, these plans have been successful, so people are like, "I can I can leave," and and they are. I mean, it's it's now, there's things we're doing to try to keep more money in plans, so just because someone retired, we remind them that they don't have to take this money. So there's big efforts to keep money in plan, which is the biggest buzzword right now, which is true, adding features and things to your plan, so people don't have to go elsewhere to get it, like managed accounts or different things that advice that they're leaving for. There's there's a trend now to try to get more of that in plan, so you see, so we can try to stem some of that, but it's but it's common across all of government.
There's three things, you're my age, and you have to start taking it out, number one. Number two, you get to take it out to pay your property taxes, number two. Number three, somebody's put a flyer on your windshield and said, "We could do this better." So I think when you talk about money leaving, some of those we can control, some of we can't.
I always say that for people that are using it to live on as a retirement, that's what it was meant for. But even there, likely it's rare that you'd need all of it at once, that your paycheck is more common of of having money distributed. So we're making sure people understand there's systematic withdrawal plans, there's ways to do that without having to take all of your money out. So that that's a trend that we're we're finding as an industry, trying to keep keep going. And also, what we've seen, the last trend I mentioned, is that because there's a lot of new people coming into government, we're finding a lot more governments are now embracing technology a lot more, looking at hybrid work schedules, or doing things they need to do to let people work from home even, to try to and use technology to have to try to hire less people, because they just can't find them. Those are trends we're seeing across the board.
And by the way, we've got a piece of legislation that's somewhere in the office that's allowing a part-time participant, part-time employee to work for the state to be participants in the 401K plan. That's finding its way through the general assembly this week, by the way. On the technology end, at the call centers, do you use technology upfront to sequence calls to people?
We do, we do, we have a lot of tech, we actually can do a, one of our sessions, we could talk about how new technology in the call centers is helping tremendously, but whisper technology when somebody authenticates and it gets to worse than I doing it again, routing calls to the right place, and if it's a tech call, make sure it goes directly to the tech team. So there's there's definitely enhanced technologies trying to make that work better.
To kind of extend on the treasurer's comments about feedback from people, what do you use to benchmark quality control on those AI systems? Because my personal experience, whether it's a major national bank, airlines, insurance companies, nobody's gotten it right yet. So how how do you how do you benchmark the the technology and the quality control on those calls?
So so most calls are, there's a, do surveys after, I don't have the survey numbers, we get those survey numbers, but upfront of that, the survey is after the fact, right? Is that we are doing better with, now we don't have the ability to do a callback. So in case you are, in case there is a hold time, you're calling at a peak time, it's lunchtime, because as treasurer said, you work for a living, so you get a callback. If you if it's if you can't stay on hold for a few minutes, you get a callback. So we're we're using new technology to be able to try to make it more convenient for folks, but ultimately, our goal is to to get the technology right, so you're not even calling the call center. That that make it easy enough, so it's in your hand, it's on your phone, the website intuitive enough that hopefully, you don't have to call the call center, but we're adding staff, we are making changes. So I want to say, I got to be careful how I use AI and generative AI, I don't think, we're not there yet in call centers, we're still using, we call just bots, they're not very, you know, I'll say technology savvy, but they're but they help participants, they help us kind of route things. I think the future is more is likely more AI actually happening. But there again, I'd argue that maybe the the right way to do it is is to have in-your-hand technology that's going to be better for you to use registered and just easier to use. That answer.
Nice, yeah, it does. Yes, a question, you you mentioned about 60% before, I think, and 27% now registered. If you drill down, is there any differentiation between the 27%, are they active employees, non-active? Is that significantly different than before?
I'll answer one, I'll answer part of it first, because I don't know that full extent there, but I can tell you that we are actually running a little better than our average plan. So across the book, you guys are running around a little better than our average. So we've got a whole, we've got a big book to move, for sure, so you guys are running better, but I don't have the the splits, I don't know if you guys have.
I would say in general, it's not.
Excuse me?
Sorry. Like McCann with Empower, I would say in general, there's no real trend in terms of, are you currently working or are you a terminated status that differentiates you versus our other plans? I would say it's more along the lines of, are you just actively paying attention to all of the materials that you're getting, the statements that you're getting, and those things in terms of like how active you want to be with your account?
And then I I have a question about the call center. You know, I, do we have a group within Empower that's more educated in NC plans, or are our calls going to the big call center for Empower?
The government government plans are onshore, so you guys are part of a specialized call center that that is answered onshore, because of course, Empower, like many organizations, have offshore call centers, which are very common. So a lot of our corporate plans are all are answered elsewhere. We have a dedicated team of onshore. We have a dedicated team of offshore folks that run our government and also a T E F Hartley plan. So they're trained specifically around government and around T E F Hartley. We, years ago, we had these kind of more pods that were primary by plan. As technology did enhance, we found that that's actually getting more complex and actually could, could actually decrease the, the, the experience, because you're waiting for a set number. It's hard to kind of set one group aside and say they're only going to answer one firm's, you know, one organization's calls. So, so now we have more intelligent routing, which is more government-based or T E F Hartley-based, but leveraging technology. So the easy answer is, we don't need more than we funded that, that was even part of it. We do run just a U S-based call center for all of our calls are answered.
Any questions from the phone? Tom, if you want to-
That's kind of the end of my, I'm going to read next, Riz.
Any other questions about the transition? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
SRP's contract with Bank of New York Mellon expires next June, so the board has two options. You can initiate a request for proposals, process, solicit proposals from multiple custodian banks, or you can extend BNY Mellon's contract. The vendor selection policy requires that the custodian, the record keeper, auditor, consultant be selected through an RFP or similar process, and we would need to start the process now to allow time to transition to a new custodian if a new custodian were selected. Alternatively, we're going to extend BNY Mellon's current contract as it did with Callan's contract last year and Empower's in two thousand twenty-two. And just as, a little bit of background on the, the contract with BNY Mellon, BNY Mellon was selected pursuant to a, an RFP two thousand fourteen, fifteen, when the plans were unbundling, and the contract started January one of sixteen, the initial term ended December thirty-one of twenty, it was an initial five-year with three one-year options. And over time, the, the board has exercised all those options, has then aligned our SRP contract with I M D's contract, Investment Management Division, we had, in the department, we have two contracts with BNY Mellon, one for the retirement systems and the other investment programs, and then one for SRP. They were essentially six months off, the board voted at a previous meeting to align those and also to have a, the same two-year option, renewal option. And kind of long story short, the board has done that, but that contract, both for I M D and for SRP, runs out June thirtieth of next year.
Is it, is it extendable then?
It is not, and that's why, and that's why we want to bring this to the board, because if you want to do an RFP, we would need to start now. If you want to ex, if you want to extend, we can extend.
So it is extendable.
Well, we don't have the, when I say renewal option, it's totally up to us, we bring it to the board, if you want to renew. An extension is, we need to amend the contract, so BNY Mellon would have to agree as well, and the conversations, we brought that up with, with BNY Mellon as well, about the possibility of extension.
Two questions, if I, if I may. One, what is our sense of how good of a job they're doing as a custodian? And second, are we comfortable that their fee they're charging as compared to other vendors? Is that in, if that's, is that in line? If the, if it's a positive answer to both those questions, we just talked about the treasurer getting a lot of emails about this sucks, I don't think we want to make another change and fill his inbox up again.
I, I'll let Chris talk a little bit about, I would say that, that BNY Mellon is not customer-facing the same way that, that Empower, that Empower is. So it's more to the extent that there were some, you know, and working through things with, with BNY Mellon, it's totally, it's totally staffed. I'll, I'll let Chris make a few comments, then I can give you some background on how we amended the contract and the pricing schedule over the last several years.
And I understand it's not customer-facing, but it's still impacting customers behind the scenes, right?
Yeah, no question. Yeah, I mean, they, they do a lot for us, that's a big job that, that they have. I would say just a little bit more background, so on the retirement system side, we've been with BNY Mellon since two thousand and seven, so it's been a, a number of years, the SRP moved over, as Reed had mentioned, in two thousand and sixteen. So we have a longstanding relationship with them. Overall, I mean, I, I think we're, we're pleased with, with the service they provide. Again, with any relationship of that size, there's always things that can be improved upon, and then we constantly work towards that. We did put some enhancements, I know Reed has it in the memo here on the SRP side, but on both sides, on the, on the retirement system side and then on the SRP side as well, some additional enhancements within the contract in the last year and a half or so-
Yes.
-to try to ensure better service as well. But overall, I would say, you know, I, I think they do a really good job. I mean, realistically, there's only probably one or two others that could even take on a relationship of this size if we're combining both the supplemental side and the, and the retirement system side. And it's obviously, it's a very, very large job to do a search and to transition as well, so that would take an enormous amount of staff time as well. But overall, I would say, you know, we're, we're pleased with the relationship in total, and I think they've, I think they're making enhancements on their side as well. So another comment I'll make is, I was at their client advisory board meeting just last month up in New York and with a lot of other senior individuals at BNY Mellon and a lot of other large clients as well, so we had a good opportunity to, to talk there and to kind of understand where they're going from a, from an organizational perspective, and then I felt good leaving that, that meeting as well. So overall, I mean, I'm positively inclined on, on what they do for us.
Great, thank you.
Following up on that, I was in New York City a few weeks ago and visited their cybersecurity war room operations center. They had said a year ago that, so if we're ever up there, they'll give us a tour. Well, they gave me an hour tour of that facility, and it was absolutely impressive and unbelievably well-done, and you saw exactly how they monitor everything, and it was fascinating. So I, I was, came away very impressed with how they handled it.
Yeah, they just gave us a tour, the same thing.
I mean, if anybody's up there, you can take advantage then. I would say, my feelings based on what I've heard, what I've experienced, the fact that new treasurer's coming in, and we don't need more drama, even though it is back, it's not front-facing, there are very few people who can bid on our business, especially both businesses. And so I would, I'm not in favor, I know you say, if we're going to do an RFP, we need to get, start kicking it right now, but I think that I'm very comfortable, the next treasurer, having a little time to figure out who BNY Mellon is, how they G-haul with us, how they G-haul with the two plans, and then, and not going out for RFP right now. I make a motion, we approve the recommendation of staff.
Thomas has second.
Okay. Just to- We'll call the roll, Treasurer Falwell. Staff's recommendation is to- Extend the contract. Extend the contract. Aye. Treasurer Falwell. Shavella Thomas.
Well, I thought I seconded, I, I-
She seconded. I think Bob, I think Bob beat you to it.
If y'all saw my hand, you would have saw, would have made the motion.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
James Lumpston.
Aye.
Greg Patterson.
Aye.
Nels Roslin.
Aye.
And Robert Hill.
I can net. Oh, I think, oh, you're, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. One more, I just want to give a brief update on three proposals at the General Assembly that involved a 401K plan. You may be aware, there was a law passed last year that restructured U N C healthcare systems. There was an amendment to that that was, that was a modification of that law that was enacted May fifteenth of this year, and one of the things that it did was make employees of the newly created U N C healthcare system eligible for the N C four oh one K plan. The second proposal was one initiated by us at, at D S T, and to bring the eligibility for the four, for our four oh one K plan in line with the broader eligibility of four fifty-seven plan, the treasurer mentioned that a little earlier. So if an employer elects to participate in the N C four fifty-seven plan, then essentially all employers, employees are eligible for the plan. Eligibility for the, our four oh one K, on the other hand, is generally determined by your membership in a defined benefit pension, most notably teasers and elders. Could also be legislative, judicial, could be, we have, I think, one or two employers who have, local employers who have their own defined benefit pension, you could also be optional retirement plan for the university, or as I just mentioned, U N C healthcare system employees. The, the current proposal at the General Assembly adds two groups to this. First is, you have some employers who have employees who are four oh one K eligible, and then they have a group of employees who are not four oh one K eligible. For example, you might have a teasers employee or a teasers participating employer, and the, their employees who are members of teasers are automatically eligible for the four oh one K. If they're not a member of teasers, for example, they're part-time, they're not eligible for the four oh one K. So those, so if you're an employer and you have some who are eligible, some are not, now all your employees, employers are eligible. The second group is, it gives the option for an employer who's not participating in the four oh one K, because let's say it's a charter school who's elected not, that's elected not to participate in teasers. Right now, their only option would be four fifty-seven, but under this proposal, they would be eligible for the four oh one K if they elected to do that. So the goal is to expand eligibility for the four oh one K without putting an additional burden on employers. So employer either opts in or already has employees that are, that are participating. The proposals in the Retirement Administrative Changes Act, and that actually passed the House yesterday, so we're hopeful, hopeful that that will pass. The final item is one the treasurer mentioned as well, is actually his proposal, is an employer match of twenty-five dollars per month for state employees. I don't know whether anyone has any additional color on that, treasurer's stepped out, I'm not aware that it's been included in anything yet at this point. Any questions?
When you mentioned charter schools, those are charter schools not participating in teasers, can now, even though they don't participate in teasers, they can join the four oh one K.
They would be able to elect in.
Okay. Awesome. Good. Any other questions for Reed? All right. Thanks, Reed. We'll move on to item, I think we're on item number seven, so bring Empower back up for more.
That was like Elizabeth Taylor's sixth husband, that didn't take long.
You would not believe how much we got done in your absence.
Sure wasn't it?
Fourth, fifth and sixth.
All right. Even the young people are laughing.
Yes, Mike, Mike McCann and Matt Herman will try to be pithy with their update today, given Rob's update. I'm going to start today on page four, just reviewing some of our key metrics. Page four gives a overview of some of our key metrics. The first one, contributions versus distributions. As you can see, the past couple of months, it's pretty, pretty normal over the last thirteen months here, but over the past couple of months, distributions have been higher than contributions into the plan. In terms of plan health, the average participant balance, active participation rate and active average employee referral rate all continue their upward trend as they, as has been consistent for the past three years. Same similar story on, on slide five, a total unique participants with the balance continued the trend higher. But one item that we are hyper-focused on from migration is that the number of enrollments have dipped down below where they had historically been, trend line-wise over the last three years. A lot of that is just change management, and we've got good plans in place over the next few months to try to get that back to where it was pre-migration, but it's definitely something that we're monitoring. And then the number of new loans has been pretty steady and consistent. We have, we are noticing a little bit of an upward trend there across all, our overall governmental book, though. Page six is our key overview of our key metrics, that we have performance guarantees in place for. In terms of the average monthly contribution rate, it continues to go higher and higher. Currently, the average monthly contribution is two hundred and seventy-one dollars. The active participation rate continues its nice, strong momentum, hovering just under thirty-five percent right now, and then still really good results using our asset allocation service goal maker. The one thing that I want to call attention to, you'll notice that so far in terms of employee, employee adoption, point or adoptions or employer contribution changes to their employer, employer contribution program, all of those were still zero as of the end of the first quarter. We put a temporarily hold on that starting at the end of last year through the migration, just to focus on the migration, and then a month after migration, we lifted that hold to add new sub-plans or new employer contribution programs. So we currently have about seventeen that are at some stage in the works right now, so getting back, getting back to the normal B A U process of those plans as well. I briefly did want to mention, call center was a big topic when, when Rob was giving his. In terms of, you know, call center, after migration, of course, we were really impacted by just the number of calls, but that is starting to stabilize so far for the month of May. Eighty-eight percent of all calls into our North Carolina phone number are being answered in less than twenty seconds, so getting, getting back to that historical B A U timeframe. And then in terms of overall call, call quality too, on a scale of five, for the month of April, the call center quality score was four point six seven out of five, so that's a really good healthy number there in terms of call quality. So not to say that there hasn't been pockets of, of bad service, we've definitely reinforced that with training, meeting with all of our, our call center leaders to reinforce that training, but again, we're starting to see some stabilization there as well. Patty, if you go quickly to slide thirty-one. Slide thirty-one, just, this, this just shows again, the percentage of assets eligible to leave and what, you know, how that looked in terms of rollouts versus cash distributions. You know, in terms of, what we look at is, for the total number of assets eligible to leave the plan, how many are staying in plan? And for the first quarter for this year, ninety-five percent of all assets eligible to leave the plan stayed in plan. That's a great number, a really strong number, but because your plan is so big, that still means that in the first quarter of this year, just in terms of rollouts, you had a hundred and seventy-six million dollars in the line. That's, that's again, just the, the hyper-focus on making sure participants know that they can keep the assets in the plan, but I think that once we get more stabilized past the migration, there's like that other services that we can potentially consider adding to the North Carolina plan if they make sense for, for the plan, to further help with those conversations. And then as we always do- And then as we always do at the bottom of the slide, we just kind of show the institutions where those rollovers are going to. And then as, and then as I mentioned, trying to go quick to same time, I want to turn it to Matt here in a minute. Slide 32 shows our call center trends. You'll notice the deep pullback for first quarter of 2024, but again, so far, April and May trending in the right direction, getting much more back to BAU as we expected to be. So I know I went quick, but in the interest of time, I'll stop there unless there's questions for me, and then I want to make sure I give Matt a few minutes to talk specifically about what the dedicated reps are doing across the state, interacting with your.
You're measuring assets eligible to be rolled out. That's the trigger point is when someone has a separation of service from the state?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We know they're in terminate, yeah, when they, we know that they've separated from service, yep. So we, we track to the best extent possible when someone separates from service. Some of your sub-plans are really good at giving us that information, others are not, but to the best extent that we know that someone is separated from service, that's how we're tracking that number. Great, thank you.
If I can just maybe tag on to that, Greg, you see here that it's, you know, a little over 36% of the assets that are, that are in this status. Another, another key fact, 30% of the plan's assets are held by people that are 65 years of age and older.
Okay. Other questions?
Well, the 95%, what's the historical trend of that?
Yeah, that's been pretty consistent, Mr. Treasurer. So this is, this is a view that you asked that we build out probably almost, oh, I'd say a little less than two years ago now, and that's pretty consistent. That number's always been right around 90% or higher when you look quarter over quarter. And then the annualized numbers usually are like around low to mid 80s for overall.
So the marketing plan, if you do it better, cheaper, you should, did that work or was that just?
Oh, I think, I think it's definitely working. I just think that there's multiple ways to go about messaging that to people, but that, that, that message is definitely working that we see a lot in our interactions with folks. You know, the other thing that, that we started doing a few years ago, too, that is definitely paid dividends, is I think that you guys call it the Form 6. So that's when someone starts the process of thinking about retiring with the pension system. So we get a data feed of that, and then we start proactively also working with those people before they actually do retire to remind them, hey, just because you're retired, you do not need to take money out of this plan. That's paid dividends, too.
So that's person-to-person contact?
Yeah, we did. Over 3,000 of our calls last year, the dedicated team to those, but we don't get ahold of all of them.
And just to be clear, and I'm dealing with this more so than most members of the board, but I think it's important when people ask them a question out, out that they can answer also. Somebody has, is a participant in these plans and they die. Their beneficiary, if their, if their beneficiary is also a participant in these plans, can they combine them? Two teachers, one passes away, both have 401Ks.
I believe that they could.
If it were a spouse, I would think they could. Non-spouse.
Yeah, the rule, yeah, this is, Lorraine, the rule is that a spouse can roll their IRA or 401K into another.
Yeah.
But that changes, but at the moment, that's been confirmed.
I'm trying to get at where, so they can, can they roll it, two teachers, both have 401Ks, one passes away. Can they roll the decedent's 401K into the 401K that they have here?
If it's a spouse, my understanding is, yeah. If it's a non-spouse.
My understanding is that as well, yes.
Yep.
So they would just, one account on the system and not two accounts?
But yeah, once that was, transaction was completed.
If it's a teacher who passes away and a person who's not in our system, can they roll that money into our system if they are not in our system themselves?
So they could definitely keep the account active as a beneficiary account. I don't remember the rules off of the top of my head.
They can keep our account active as a beneficiary account?
Yeah, they can, they, not defer. Not deferring, not deferring, no, but like if they're the beneficiary, we have, we have a lot of accounts today where like it's a beneficiary account that are on our system. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. I think we'd probably tighten up those answers a little bit. So either you have to leave the family, you don't have to leave the family in terms of this family. So I think it produces people's anxiety if they know they don't have to go out and search for an advisor.
Okay.
All right. I mean, I think they have the beneficiary. Christie, this is really for you, this, I think this little float, just a little simple flow chart for people. Be helpful.
I mean, you can definitely take that as an action item. Excuse me. Okay.
Good morning. Trying to follow up members of the board. I think your time. I will just continue to slide 33, just to set the stage, just build off of Mike's comments, Rob's updates, as well as the updates from Jeff. You know, first quarter was busy, to say the least, a lot going on. We had migration right in the middle of the quarter in February. As you all are aware, we have 18 counselors across the state, retirement counselors dedicated to this plan, very tenured team, over 420 years of experience in this industry with that team that's dedicated to the program. Most of those folks have been with this program over 10 years. We actually have four people in the team over 20 years, some approaching 25 years. So a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, and a lot of relationships, right, that have been built over the years across the state. We have 1,000, 1,000 sub-plans, probably five to 10 contacts per sub-plan. You do that math, five to 10,000 of those, this team interacts with in some form or fashion throughout the years. So as you can imagine during migration, they're pretty busy, they got a lot of calls. And you can see the breakdown of engagement activity on slide 33. I think it's a great testament to the work of this team, their knowledge and their hard work really comes through in these numbers, right? Regardless of category, one-on-ones, our group meetings, our employer meetings, I'll call out a couple things. Group meetings, attendance, right? We host a lot of education meetings, the attendees on those meetings we track, both virtually and onsite. We had over 13,210 these meetings. That's up 12% year-over-year. So in spite of the changes, the enhancement period we went through, different things were managed, change management perspective, as Mike shared, strong engagements with employees throughout the quarter, in January, February, and March. Total engagements with employees, right, we have 460,000 eligible's out there, 310 unique, 310,000 unique participant accounts. We had over 19,700 total education engagements. That's the combination of one-on-one meetings and group meeting attendance. That's up 8% year-over-year. So we saw an increase in employee engagements. The other thing I'll call out, and this is probably the biggest increase, not shocking, are the employer meetings. Now typically, we do about 300 employer meetings a month. Those meetings are typically meetings with HR folks, finance folks, centers of influence out of county or city or municipality, a school, to build advocacy for this program, to connect the field team to their employees, to help with their education needs. That's typically the type of conversation we're having. We do about 300 of those a month. If you look at January, February, and March, we're well above the 3. We had over 480 employer meetings in, over 700 in February, and 440 in March. Why is that? I would look to migration, right? Traditionally, they're reaching out for their education needs, we're proactively reaching out to build advocacy. But again, back to my comments earlier, these are established relationships. So we did a lot proactively to reach out to those contacts, and we of course got calls from them. We're always trying to get them to the right partner that can help them if it's an operational question, if it's a payroll question. But we did a lot as well. If you look at February and the 700 meetings, about 80% of those were with migration. That number has come down. If you look at April and May, which I know you don't have in front of you, we're getting closer to that 300 a month employer meeting number, which I think is another indicator that coming out of migration, are we done yet? No. The volume we're seeing, the frequency of the migration questions coming in has definitely decreased, which I think that's a good thing, getting back to some form of work. The other thing I wanted to share, and it's not on this page, but it kind of builds off of what Rob shared about net promoter scores, really excited for my teams that I work with, the 18 folks, when they do a one-on-one, now with the new systems we're using, we can actually send surveys out after a one-on-one. And we've been doing that. We started that in April formally. In April, we had 110 employees who did a meeting, responded to that survey, and sent it back. Rob mentioned the net promoter score, it's the same with these surveys. You can get anywhere from a negative 100 to a positive 100 score. World class is 70. For those 110 surveys that went out for your participants, we have a score of 93. So I think the numbers are an indicator of the hard work the team has done, but I think the quality of the discussions that comes through in those surveys, that's a new survey mechanism for us, and that's something we're going to continue to share. As you can see, kind of what's the barometer out there, I think, Mr. Shit comes back to one of your questions, how do you benchmark, how do you look at quality? That's one thing we do, so we'll be looking at that.
Can I ask, since you brought that up, I was thinking about asking a question on slide 31 in the, in the education. So how do our plan participant statistics here on 31 compare with other states? Is it similar?
That's a great question. So this specific viewpoint was a request that Mr. Falwell had. So what I would say in general, compared to other governmental plans, not apples-to-apples, but I would say typically, yes, the trend line is still there. Would you add any, I mean?
So no matter how much education you're going to do, you're still going to lose out to some high sales pressure pitches all the time?
Yeah, I would, yeah. There are other things that can't be done, though, again, not to, these are deeper, detailed conversations, there are things we can do. We now have the ability to add advice to a plan, which we find most people leave because the advisor or the person they're in is saying, you know that your plan can only educate, we can give you advice, well, now Empower does provide advice if you so choose to use it. There are managed accounts, which we know that people do gravitate toward, they can get those outside the plan, not in plan. So there are things over time that we now have available at Empower we didn't have before, that when the board's ready, we can, we can provide that information, you can make a decision, those do help keep more people in plan.
And Bob, to kind of tag on to that, I think it was last year, we kind of, we kind of did a deeper dive on, on some of this, and a, a number of people, what's a, what's a massive wealth, they want somebody to help them.
Yes.
They, they want that advisor, and the plans today do not offer any of that. So I think we see some, some of that, some of that money going out because people are seeking help.
Yeah, I think moving forward, big question is how do you combine, you add to this program, the cost structure, all the benefits that Mr. Treasurer, you've talked about, with some of the other things that have not been enabled here? Because my experience, I mentioned 3,000, not my calls, it was probably 3,000 to 4,000 last year. We track those calls, and we'll actually look at the pockets of those to see how we did. The anecdotal reviews we do periodically will tell you that we see about a 10% lift in the retention of those folks that we can actually get a hold of. And that, that's just an education conversation.
So that advice model can be delivered by the team salary. We're not, we're not talking about bringing advisors in that are going to, that sell product, there's an advice component that Empower can do with the existing team, getting licensed, leveraging Morningstar, salary, they're not commission. But again, at the right time, when you're ready to talk about it, we can clearly create a broader conversation.
Yeah, I think there's some really exciting things we can add to the tool well that I think just in, plans similar to this that have those things, you probably see some of those.
Thanks.
But we can talk more about that.
And all those people are Series 7, right?
They would be Series 65 or 66. Thank you. I'm going to jump to slide 34, enrollments, just to build off of Mike's comments, you'll see the rolling 12 months from the enrollment activity of this plan. That's something we look at every quarter. You can see second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter, really high numbers there. 2023 for the full year was the high watermark here for 2023. 21 was a record year, 22 is higher than that, 23 is even higher. What we saw in Q1 was a drop in enrollment. We had 4,811 enrollments during the fourth, or during the first quarter across January, February, and March. I think, probably goes without saying, but I'll just reinforce, a lot of change, I think that's probably the big driver here. We've got employers learning new systems, they're submitting payroll in a slightly different way, you see changes in business processes, the website is upgraded and changed, new mobile experiences. And the other thing I think is kind of, it's still early, but we haven't set up any new plans either. We've had, I think, five or six plans want to set up the 401K or 457. That's also, if you think about it, a source of enrollments. Typically, at this point, we've set up a few of those. We haven't done those yet, so I think you'll see some of those catching up in the second, third quarter as we start establishing new plans, because we are getting requested for new plans, we have employers that add new batch programs, they add some of the optional designs that you all may give them, none of those have been set up yet, we're starting that. So I think you'll see that play out probably in the second quarter. Kind of to give you some perspective on what's going on, to kind of get back to normal, we actually accelerated our spring education campaign. Usually, this time of year, we're starting our spring campaign in, which we do a lot more statewide events, we're getting out there, we're doing a lot locally and regionally. We decided to move that up this year, and we did in April. We had almost 8,920 enrollments in the month of April, it's all to that campaign. So just to give you some perspective on some of the business as usual, we're actually planning now, like, over National Retirement Security Month campaign, that's still a ways out. In between spring and fall, we actually target retail to first responders, those in the front lines that are serving, law enforcement, firefighters. We also do things with the K, based, because we're planning out some of those focus campaigns that will happen June, July, and August, and building to the big fall campaign. Hey, we'll continue our retiree calls, we've talked a lot about that, it's something we do in between traditional one-on-one and group meetings, we continue to reach out to retirees to make sure they have the support needed. You know, in closing, I would, I would share this, last year, Empower conducted a study, an employee financial wellness survey. When you look at the data there, there's a lot of interesting stats that come out of certain things like that. One thing that, folks that were surveyed, this is nationally, 73% of them want to work for an employer that cares about financial wellness, that go there and they want to stay there when their financial wellness needs to meet that. So I just, shout-outs to this board who do support that, because this is contributing to financial wellness. The work we do as education is critical, we'll continue to help any way we can, and excited about future meetings to give you updates, not just about what we're doing now, but some of those optional things that we can enable to actually take back to the next level. So thanks for your support, your partnership. Happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions?
Just a quick observation, you may not realize if you're not in the financial services industry, but if you look at where the funds are going, Fidelity, Charles Swab, Pershing, and NFS, they are, they serve as custodians for a lot of registered investment advisory firms. So that ties into participants looking for advice, and they're going to a local investment advisor who uses those firms as their custodian.
Yeah, and I mean, we do a lot of calls, right? Eventually, 3,000 calls. Sometimes that's the right decision for somebody, only they know that, but there are times where we reach out, and even though we send emails, we communicate in campaigns, they may think they have to leave, or they may not know if they can stay, and if they know somebody down the street that's a broker, they want to move, they may just move because they think they have to. And there are sometimes, we get ahold of people, and they're getting ready to roll out, and they didn't realize they're Bailey Best, right? So we run into those situations, too. So we're not saying it's always the wrong thing, but I think there's a lot of opportunities in some of these optional services, I think, can help address that.
I'll test your math skills here. So how young could the youngest Bailey be?
I was an English major, so.
Damn good answer. It was a question, how young could the youngest Bailey be at this point?
Uh, let's see, I think.
Did they have to be enrolled before 1989?
Exactly. I think they had had like five years of service by then, didn't they? Or just enrolled?
I missed it by three months.
How old are you?
When I started working, I missed it by three months.
I think it was August 12, 1989, you had to be enrolled. The pension you had to have five years, but 401K, you had to be enrolled. You can be an 18-year-old, born in '71.
So Chavella, what year were you born in? You want to tell us how old you were?
I was born 1960, I was good for my age.
Nineteen what?
Sixty.
Six, sixty?
Yes.
You're sixty-four.
Yes.
Maybe.
You just blew through your prom when she said you would. I know, but I, so that must, that must mean you must have started young. I mean, with the state young.
I did. I, I did.
Probably out of college. Okay.
Right, I pretty much started out of college.
In eighty-eight.
All right.
Prudential, my first job.
Right.
And I'm gonna be fifty-nine this year.
Sure.
So I started.
The youngest Bailey is gonna be about sixty-four then, if they started working right out of this college.
That's right. Well, I started in eighty-four. I started in November of eighty-four. And so that's why I missed it by three months.
All right. And they could be a lot younger than that because they could be more than seventy-one. I mean, if you started eighteen.
Right.
Or in seventy-one.
You back it up four years, but yeah. All right. And you talked about financially prepared, and I'm just, it's on my heart. When we have a tax code that only allows people to deduct five thousand dollars for childcare out of flexible spending accounts, and it costs fourteen thousand dollars to put a person, get childcare in this county right now, that just shows you how upside down our world is. Simple fix.
That's not.
It's really easy, right? It's really easy to fix, right? It's really easy to understand. I understand that, yeah. Easy to fix. All right.
Good morning, Treasurer, Board, and Staff. For those on the phone, this is Paul Langgenke with Galliard Capital Management, who helps provide stable value management for State of North Carolina. So we could, we could start with page four. Just kind of give you a glance of, you know, what has happened over the last three months. You see in the upper left-hand corner, total assets under management, about eighty-three point three billion. That's down about two point two billion. And that really came from, you know, assets leaving stable value. Twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, going from sixty-seven point one billion to sixty-four point nine. So we got that two point two billion. And really, that's due to primarily to participants reallocating their assets, whether different options in the plan or outside the plan. You know, one thing I just want to reiterate too is, is, you know, RFP, Request for Proposals, new search activity for the stable value and fixed income, has been, it's been pretty good for, for Galliard. Over the last couple of quarters, we have added a couple, two new stable value separate accounts, roughly three hundred million in one fixed income separate account, about four hundred and ten million. So it just goes to show that with, with participants moving their money, that's where we've seen the lion's share of outflows for assets. Hundred and ninety institutional clients plus. It's actually just added a couple of new ones. Average ten years, fourteen years. State of North Carolina has been with us for thirteen and a half years. We're almost there. December first, twenty-ten. Turning to the next page, page five, show the, the word chart here. Couple of notes on this page. First, Jennifer Lammers, as you see in our client support team, you know, retired on May third, and her responsibilities were delegated across internally, across senior staff, and which cover mainly front office operations, client service support, and marketing. Now, while this retirement was planned well in advance of May, this change has no impact on Galliard's investment teams or clients. Another note I'd like to add, it's not shown on this page, but more or less for our parent company, Allspring, we announced a new CFO effective May thirteenth. And that lag comes from ProShares, which is a global ETF provider. She served as the CFO there since January of twenty-twenty-three. Prior to that, she worked at Invesco for almost twenty-five years. So, you know, just adding to our CFO suite and our parent company. So not much else to add on this page. If we move ahead to page seven, kind of, kind of take a look at what rates have been doing again, you know, pretty consistent with that Fed funds rate in that, that kind of orange just brown line. You know, as I mentioned before, the, the Fed funds rate is roughly around five point two five to five point five percent. That's been that way since Ju- July twenty-third, twenty-three. We have seen a little bit movement in that three-year constant maturity treasury yield. That's that dark purple line, the dark line. You know, again, while we see mainly treasury yields dropping since the, since the fall of last year, they did, they did itch up a little bit over the first quarter. While inflation seems to be slower to, to go down, the Fed really has signaled pushing any rate cuts further into twenty-twenty-four. Number of cuts and degree is uncertain at this point. When these cuts do occur, that, you know, the drops in yields should be beneficial to fixed income returns. And as, as such, for in terms of stable value, should help that numerator of market, the market to book ratio, which ultimately shows up in the crediting rate, which participants, that's the genesis for that participant. One last thing to note on this, again, the green line that you see, that's basically U-shaped. It is showing that net credit rates are continually following the movement of interest rates. But again, due to the lag, due to that book value smoothing returns, but they are itching up in following the movement of interest rates. Any question on yields right now? Okay. Turning to the next page, portfolio characteristics of the stable value fund as of the end of the first quarter. Characteristics really show the stable value fund is, is performing as expected, especially in this elevated interest rate environment. Assets over the quarter have come down about ninety-eight point five million, which is roughly about four percent. And that really came from, you know, about a hundred and sixteen billion in participant outflows. That was offset up by about seventeen point four million. Lower left-hand part of the page, portfolio characteristics quarter over quarter. We see, you know, again, same book value, financial strength ratings of the wrappers that provide that guarantee on the zero crediting rate. Market value, the, the average quality again there is double A, and that's the underlying financial strength of the bonds that make up the stable value fund. Number of wrap provider or contract issuer is still consistent. We did see the blended yield or the crediting rate after all fees go up by about thirteen basis points over the quarter. And that was reflected again too with the yield and maturities going up about twenty-seven basis points from four nine one to five point one eight percent. And if, just kind of put into perspective what those yields look like. So State of North Carolina is about five point one eight percent yield to maturity for their underlying investments. That's on the first quarter. Ninety-one day T-bills are three-month T-bills, about five point four six. And the three-year constant maturity treasury is about four point fours, four point four percent. So really what this is showing is that yield curve still remains inverted again, as the Fed funds rate hasn't moved over the past year or so. Right-hand part of the page, the portfolio distribution and assets really seem to be pretty consistent quarter over quarter. And really, again, we are finding opportunities to invest in the fixed income market across sectors. So really no issues with finding good places for money to, to be invested. Any questions on the characteristics? Okay. Turning to the next page, kind of the book value, net of all fee performance. Again, metrics are aligned, performances align with expectations. Again, the, the book value returns here are, are really driven from the underlying fixed income performance, which I'll get to in a few pages. But it's also indicative of, of cash flows, which flow into the credit rate. So negative, negative cash outflows really do have an effect on returns, well, on crediting rates, which does have an effect on returns. Typically, State of North Carolina has been pretty consistent with their, their flows. We did see a little bit of an uptick in their first quarter flows, which I'll get to in the next page. But really, it's not inconsistent from what we've seen from our other stable value clients, stable value separate account clients. So really no concerns there. And again, really that five point one eight percent yield to maturity is, is helping drive returns. But again, as I mentioned in previous quarters, when you're looking at the benchmark comparison, three-year CMT is somewhat apples to oranges comparison, as there's no perfect benchmark for stable value, given that amortization of the, the book value smoothing returns. Again, we use the three-year constant maturity treasury because again, it's readily available. It's safe and secure in treasuries, investments, and the duration is similar to stable values. Turning to the next page, we see the cash flows, and this is what I mentioned. So you see far right of the page, we see outflows in the first quarter. Over the past year, taking from March to March, it was roughly about eight percent outflows. And we look, as I mentioned previous, as we look at across our stable value separate account book of business, we saw about outflows about eight to nine percent over the year. I mean, there are some clients that are eighteen, nineteen percent outflows, and some that are, you know, less. But that being said, you know, we are able to be invested fully in the market regardless of the, the cash outflows. Turning to the next page, we see, uh, page eleven, we see the historical statistics of the last nine quarters. And again, upper left-hand corner of the page, we are seeing the crediting rates, the historical blended yields or the net of fee credit rates moving up or following the path of interest rates. So again, this is what we would expect to see. And, you know, for, if we look at that first quarter twenty-four crediting rate, we see that, that, that's derived from fourth quarter twenty-three data, which did have positive returns. And we did have minor outflows, but with, from yields going down, we did see the market to book move up in the fourth quarter. We have seen since that it turned around slightly. If you look at the right-hand part of the page, we saw the market, market to book ratio. Some market value of, of assets of securities come down over the quarter. And again, that's corresponding to the yields going up. So any questions on history, last night course? Next page, page twelve. Really here, consistent allocations of, of financial strength ratings for the book value wrappers or the contract issuers quarter over quarter. And again, they're all at the lowest fee across our tenant-proof wrap providers at fifteen basis points. Really what that fifteen basis points is providing, is, is providing insurance. You know, again, we saw in twenty-twenty-two, equities and fixed income on a market value basis really get hit on the chin. But again, that fifteen basis points provides that book value smoothing returns and provides that guarantee of a zero percent crediting rate flow. So with that being said, if we could again, move page sixteen on fees. What we see here, quarter over quarter, Galliard's fee really, it's a most favorite nation's fee. So again, for your assets, you'll always be getting the lowest fee. That's not me. And really, if you look at the total annual fund operating expenses, we did see a drop. And again, that was indicative of that fee holiday, that admin fee holiday, which moved from one basis point to zero over the, over the quarter. And that was roughly a three point three percent drop. That point two of a basis point fee is for custody. If we move ahead to page, let's move to page, page nineteen. Really kind of wraps up, you know, how the entire portfolio, the underlying fixed income allocations and what is being invested. Really similar quarter over quarter. There are some areas, you know, where Galliard has found some, some rich parts of the, the fixed income sector market. Really corporates, municipal treasuries are a little bit on the high side. Will be trimming things there specifically. And really where we found opportunities in the asset-backed security sector of the market, specifically on the short end of the curve. Turning to page, the next page on page twenty, I'm not gonna go through all the underlying the, the stable value five for, for time's sake. But for underlying management performance for the first quarter, really, equities really had another great quarter. Big rally with the number of equity benchmarks reaching record highs. However, as I mentioned, inflation continues to come in higher than expected. The labor market appears strong at the end of, at the end of the quarter in March, but it's, it's softened a bit since. Given this, the Fed has decided to keep rates unchanged. With the Fed cuts being delayed, this effect mainly had bond yields generally rising, which in turn, you know, bond prices down. That's why the market, market book went down over the quarter. But for the fun, for the fixed income markets, so shorter-term duration fixed income outperformed intermediate or longer-term duration, roughly by about forty to sixty basis points when comparing benchmark returns. Specifically for State of North Carolina, returns for the short duration, which is reflected on page twenty, was roughly about eighty-one basis points for the quarter. And intermediate duration strategies that make up the bulk of the investments were basically flat to slightly negative. All managers, including Galliard, with the exception of TCW, outperformed for the quarter. TCW is down a handful of points, about fourteen basis points for the quarter. And really, that was affected negatively by being longer than the benchmark duration and being underweight corporates. But that was offset somewhat by strong security selection in the corporate sector. Agency asset-backed securities also was a little bit of a detractor for TCW. You know, again, we, we do see pockets in the fixed income market where, where we are finding opportunities, as, as I mentioned before, in short-term, asset-backed securities being one of those, with mainly the other fixed income sectors being pretty much fairly too expensively valued at this point. Those were the comments I had. Are there any questions?
Just one. It's more out of curiosity on page nineteen. With the inverted yield curve, my expectation would be to see a little bit more of the distribution on the short end. But it's still the lowest amount on the duration spread there.
Yeah, so again, the way we manage portfolios is, is interest rate and duration neutral. We don't try to make interest rate bets. If, if I, I did look at the fourth quarter numbers comparing to, you know, that underlying duration distribution. If you looked at the, the one to three-year bucket, that went down from thirty-six point three percent. Or I'm sorry, it went up from thirty-six point three percent to thirty-nine percent. And the three to five-year and the five-year-plus buckets went down. Three to five-year went from twenty-five point five to twenty-six, and five-years-plus, twenty-two point five in the fourth quarter to twenty-three point one. So we are, you know, we are moving slightly like that. But again, we, we want to make sure that we're interest rate agnostic and, and duration. So that, that's why you see such a consistent duration profile.
Good. Thank you. Questions? Any questions remotely?
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. And everyone, we have a great safe moment.
Thank you. Next presenters.
To the board, my name is Weston Lewis. I'm with Callon. I'm gonna go over the market environment for the quarter, talk a little bit about the performance of the underlying plan options. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Elizabeth, and she's gonna talk about another deliverable that we have, which is evaluating the investment management fees relative to peer groups. So with that, I'll start on page three, I believe it is, on the media. That page right there. Thank you. All right, so just, excuse me, a quick summation of the market. So as you think, there's, there's an old adage describing market returns of, and the short-term markets are driven by sentiment. And then, you know, medium-term, call it three to five years, driven more by valuation. Long-term, ten years plus, markets are driven by economic growth. So as you think about what are driving markets here in the near term, it's sentiment from really two areas. Number one, what is the Fed going to do? And number two is the sentiment around optimism and artificial intelligence or AI. So we certainly saw that and, and, you know, affecting returns. As you look at the, the leaders in the US markets, large-cap growth continues to lead. A lot of that large-cap growth segment, we've talked about the magnificent seven, really seven stocks driving market results. A lot of those, you know, arguably are more sensitive to interest rates and that their earnings are, you know, out in the, the, the far future. That magnificent seven dominance that we've seen over past quarters, that is, is still certainly a. That magnificent seven dominance that we've seen over past quarters, that is still certainly a theme, but that. That dominance is waning a bit and there's a little bit more market leadership from others in the indices. So, you know, I would say another kind of key theme and this this certainly affected some of your managers. Talked about concentration of the indices, especially in that large cap growth space. And that just a few handful of names are affecting results. It finally hit the small cap market where two names, Super Micro and Micro Strategy. These two companies that have artificial intelligence exposure. They were up significantly, you know, I want to say that Super Micro was up about eight hundred percent in the quarter. It started with a modest weight and Russell twenty five hundred index. And then it ended up at a very high weight in the Russell twenty five hundred index. So just to give you all some historical perspective. Never has there been such a high weight of a single name in the Russell twenty five hundred index as Micro Strategies is now. When you pair the two Micro Strategies and Super Micro. They never have you had kind of a combination of, so you know, that. The failure to own those names in the in your portfolio as an active manager. Is was a big headwind for performance for for some of the managers. Talk about that a little bit later. Going to the non-US markets, returns outside the US were strong as well, strongly positive. Over the last, I would say, you know, if you look at US versus non-US, certainly US for the last decade. The decade plus has really led US market, has led. Non, non-US performance. But, you know, I think an underlying theme that you could say over the last fifteen, twenty years for active management in non-US is that. Japan in the late nineties got to be such a large weight in the index and the. The valuations of the securities within that country were so astronomically high. That one of the themes over the these past twenty years, that managers have been underweight Japan and it's been an easy tailwind for them. As you look at Japan results over the last quarter of the last year, we can say that trade is over. And and so Japan, the Japanese markets have kind of taken off. And if you factor in the strength of the dollar, if you looked at the Japan local market returns, actually outperformed the US of the last year. So just, you know, some consideration and that factors into one of your. And then as you look at emerging markets, this has been a theme. China is just such a large weight within emerging, the emerging markets index. China's activities and uncertainty around, you know. Regulatory issues and, you know, kind of what is going on with geopolitical risk. China has pulled back over the last year and, you know, China's losses have been in large part India's gains. So as you look at India's markets and China's markets, China, you know, struggling whereas India has begun to take off. And that has been a key theme within emerging markets. And then finally, we'll talk about fixed income on the next page. What is driving fixed income markets? If you looked at, you know, again, this is very much sentiment driven, but if you looked at. Commentary six months ago, almost all of them would have read that expectation is for the federal fund rate, that funds rate. To come down over twenty twenty four. So far, that has not happened and there, you know, there's really no certainty that it will happen here in this year. But there are still some market expectations that that federal federal funds rate will come down from that five and a quarter to five and a half percent. And a lot of that being driven by the stickiness of inflation. And, you know, really the Fed, you know, wanting to see some of that inflation, that last mile of inflation driven out before they they make a change. So in that environment, bond returns were down as that ten year yield did creep up as a this, you know, an expectation that the near term interest rates. Or that funds rate would not be changed or would be changed less. So I'm going to jump two pages to page five. Just mention a couple of things in this strong market environment. The total value of the 401K and 457 assets jumped up from sixteen billion to sixteen point eight billion. All of that driven by investment returns for the quarter. Just one of the things that you might have noticed in the prudential, or sorry, the empower book was the amount in Goalmaker. So if you think about how much of these assets are in Goalmaker, about fifty percent of these assets are represented by Goalmaker. Which is that model portfolio service that that changes over time as a participant ages and approaches and enters into retirement. And one thing I actually I will point out here, just I do think this is relevant. If you were to look at that tier two passive and. Think about, all right, what what passive options does Goalmaker use? So I would just say that treasury inflation protected, large cap passive and inflation responsive fund. Those are three that Goalmaker allocates to within that that service. And then of the active strategies, the one that it does not, Goalmaker does not allocate to is that large cap core equity fund. So all of the others Goalmaker leverages to to build that allocation. Going on to the next page, we'll just talk about performance and. We'll we'll focus more on the option level. So this is what the participant sees. They don't see, you know, they can dig in and understand, well, what did the underlying managers do? But generally, they see what. What the the option level, how the option level performed versus its index. So if we were to categorize the very top, all of the passive strategies, they're doing what you hire them to do, which is track their respective indices at a low fee. I would point out that inflation responsive fund that includes commodities, tips, REITs. That in global REITs in particular, there's a little bit of tracking error between that strategy and the index, which is. What we would expect given the nature of the underlying strategies, but certainly remains within expectations for a passive strategy. Then looking down at the active funds net of fees, we just talked about stable value. Looking at the returns on a historical basis, you know, in line with expectations. We've said it here a number of times, we'll say it again. What we like typically like to see for stable value funds is not so much, you know, the the returns, but our crediting rates, our market to book ratios. Better than peers and on both of those metrics, Gallard's stable value strategy is better than than peers. So then moving on down to the fixed income fund, we would say that this this option is in line with expectations, outperforming the index. Generally favorable relative to mutual fund peers net of fees over time. So, you know. Results there for the large cap core equity fund. We just point out some improvement over the last quarter and over the last year. There have been some challenges with manager results there. One of those managers, we'll talk about a little bit later, is is remains on watch. Another one, Sands Capital, has shown some some market improvement here for the year. And then on the international equity fund option. Gave some back, some performance back for the quarter. And that really drove some of that underperformance for the year over the longer term time frames. And this, this is one where you have some really long history, performing well, a lot of that, you know. Well, some of the underperformance really came from Bailey Gifford, I mentioned that Japan, their Japan underweight was a drag on performance. But certainly in line with expectations from our perspective for the type of strategy they run. Then finally, the small and mid cap equity option. This, you'll recall, this was a bit of a challenging quarter for this option. You recall, there were a couple of things. Number one, there was a transition from. The kind of intermediate passive strategy or the interim passive strategy back to AB. You know, while, you know, you all did hire a transition manager to help with that transition, to keep costs down and to be able to understand what those costs were. It was not cost free, so that that factored into the performance. But really the driving, you know, the performance driver for the quarter. Had to do with that higher quality emphasis you have and really limited exposure to those two names, Super Micro. And Micro Strategies is is the driver of results for for the quarter. If if we were to put a number around, you know, for for Brown in particular or Ernest, it was about a two percent drag on performance. Just by not owning those strategies or not owning those two names. So, you know. Longer term results, I would say, three year improved for this option. You all have made some changes over time. We still think those changes will. Yield some benefit for you all, but you know, maybe a more near term setback in terms of relative performance. And then we will jump to page fifteen. To summarize a couple of things, so as you think about. A watch list and how does Callan summarize? How does Callan summarize not just performance, but how do we characterize the the people, the process, the philosophy? Because ultimately, those are what drive the performance of the strategies. So this is how we we view the world and we we try to mark things where where there are changes. Just as a reminder, you all, last quarter, you put two manager strategies on that formal watch list. That would be Macquarie, TCW. Both of those driven by some personnel changes, Macquarie's personnel changes happened a while back. But what we're watching for is the execution. So a new team came in place four or five, four to five years ago. How have their picks, you know. Resulted and how, you know, are they, have they been effective? So that that's what we're paying attention to and TCW's changes are a little bit more recent with requirements of some longtime members of that strategy. So then, you know, to characterize what changed, there are just two very small changes. The first is this first line, Pashkis and Wiley, I would say it's good. We marked the short term performance notable. So we have these sometimes hard to discern, you know, what do the colors mean? Green is is generally good, blue is, hey, you know, we point this out, this could be good, could be bad. It's it's not something that we're necessarily worried about. Yellow is a little bit more cautionary and red is certainly that this this needs to be reviewed. So we marked Pashkis and Wiley's shorter term performance is notable on the positive side. And this is something I think we we hope we shared when Sands was doing so exceptionally well is when a manager's. Taking on a a level of risk to outperform an index by ten fifteen percent. By default, they are taking enough risk to underperform that index by ten or fifteen percent. So we just kind of were pointing out that Pashkis and Wiley's execution and their stock selection has been very good. You know, and. Market is a point in time where it won't always be perfect, it won't always be this good, but we do think strategy works over time. And then going on to the next page, the only other thing that changed is on page sixteen. At the very bottom, we have Bailey Gifford, Acquis US Growth Strategy. These two also the performance, you know, colors changed from green, that that no concern to somewhat more notable. As I mentioned before, this strategy, the performance is in line with our expectations for growth strategy like this. Their, you know, their stock selection over time has been very good. It is just, you know, some performance challenges. This is a little bit different, whereas in the US, you look at growth indices versus growth managers outside the US, really that the style indices never took off. So you're looking at the core index versus a growth manager. And that value versus growth dynamic is cycled over outside the US. So and, you know, in line with our expectations, we're just marking it as noteworthy and, you know, as value has turned over. And started to outperform growth outside the US, this is in line with our expectations. That is the high level overview. Happy to answer any questions about any of the underlying managers, the option performance. Otherwise, we'll move on to the investment management review.
Any questions? Two of my mentors who are now passed. Jordan, the Nikkei in nineteen eighty nine at forty thousand. They took all that money and bought one percent of the outstanding treasury debt in the United States. At eight percent. Using ninety percent margin. So that was quite a trade. The Nikkei went from forty thousand to ten thousand. Over a long period of time. And you know what happened to interest rates? So anyway, I just thought of them.
Did you piggyback on that? Huh? Did you piggyback on that trend?
And so anyway, it's just, I just hadn't thought about Charlie and Stan for a long time, but you were my mentor, but mentor, actually. But thank you. There's not been space between Ford and Callan, but between me and Callan over the last couple of years regarding big cap. Active versus passive, so next time you present, maybe you can give us an update on how wrong I was and how right the board was. That'd be helpful. Get it back to me. I don't know if that's what I was going to say, but I'm just. You have the laugh.
Okay, we'll we'll be honest to the data.
Okay.
You're per se.
All right, well, now the questions on performance, we'll move ahead to the, so we'll go into the next presentation. Thank you. Forward, so we know these are a topic that are very near. Words card, we're all very diligent, so what we're looking at here is the investment management. And we're taking a look at the region buckets, so first are the fees very reasonable. So we're going to measure that second by looking at how they compare to peers, so relative to other options that are available to the board and to participants. And then third, are there any opportunities for further savings? So again, you all are very diligent in negotiating. We also want to take a moment to say, hey, is there another vehicle that's available? Is there another way we could access this? Do we have data that indicates we might be able to further negotiate the existing fee schedules? And then on the next page, so we put a little bit about the methodology there, the next page. Tips a summary, or the summary is here, so across the board. At the option levels, we always start with what the participant sees, the overall options. Each one is either at or below, in most cases below the median fee, so very positive news. What you're looking at here at the top are passive options. So because these are standalone, single investment options, we took a little bit more of a competitive peer group. So we looked at. Actual stated data from our fee survey, so going out to individual clients with similar asset mandate sizes and saying, okay, what are those fees? So for each of those, you all are at or below the median. The ranges have gotten pretty tight here, which is why it's not a huge gap of, you know, you're fifty percent less. And so again, you all have done a great job of leveraging the size and scale of this plan. Also leveraging relationships across the DB plan and bringing those assets into place. And so that has provided a good benefit that accrues to participants. Looking below, bottom half, those are the active options. And again, this is the blended multi-manager fee, this is what participants actually are paying at the aggregate level. And here, we're comparing these to a broader mutual fund group, so thinking, you know, what's your alternative institutional quality mutual fund vehicle? So in this case, stable value, which we saw the breakdown of fees there in line with the median. The peer group here is pretty small, there are not a lot of separate accounts at this asset size within stable value, so it's pretty small. But we do, again, this is competitive and compelling fee. The other options, there are five options, are either fifty, between fifty and sixty eight percent below the median. So you all, again, have done a great job of negotiating fees. So you all, again, have done a great job of negotiating fees. This is all benefit that accrues to participants. So all very good news there. We do then dig one level deeper on the next page to think in those multiple manager options, how do the individual managers look? Do we have any opportunities? We know we've got a great fee, but could we even do better? So we take a look, we reach out to each firm again. Is there a lower cost option, any other fee schedule, anything that we can take advantage of? We are accessing lowest cost here. We're primarily in separate accounts, so we expect that. But again, we don't want to assume just in case somebody launched a CIT or some other vehicle. We always ask the question to confirm. And then here, the bulk of the managers are double digits percentage savings below that median. There's only two exceptions, Pachus and Wiley and Sands. So both of those are large cap. Pachus is large cap value. Weston mentioned them a little bit, taking a bit more risk. Sands, another one that we've talked about. So if you think about, these are the two most active of the active large cap. So deeper value, more aggressive growth. And those are 5% and 7% above. So the two that are above are 5% and 7%. Everything is below to the tune of 10% to 7% below. So what that tells us is we still have an opportunity. So we always work with staff and make conversations with Pachus and Wiley with Sands. This gives us data to break up to say, hey, by the way, this is what we're seeing from others. These two have pretty consistently been a little bit on the higher end. I think that's something they just know when they were hired. But again, it gives us that concrete data to go back and say, hey, here are the numbers, here's where you are. Let's talk about this. So we don't recommend any changes. We think that everything, again, very meaningful fee savings, mostly in the 50% below median. So very good news. And then we'll keep working on those other two.
Do we have, do we have MFN agreements with all of these managers?
I don't believe we have them with all of them.
Not all of them, several of them.
Several of them we do, but not all of them. I'd have to go back and look.
Not all managers will agree to.
Yeah.
Okay. Something we tried to get into, oh, sure.
Questions on fees?
Any questions on fees?
Sure. Go ahead.
Who'll present?
So the next item is the proposal relating to the glide path. And so I'll start by setting the stage of what this is, why it's important. And then, Mr. Treasurer, I want to address your concern that you brought up at the onset. So just as a reminder, last quarter, we did glide path suitability. So we're going back into Goalmaker territory. As Weston mentioned, that's 50% of the planned assets, so about $8 billion of participant assets reside within the Goalmaker program. So obviously, an important part for participants.
And I think it's important to differentiate. What is glide path? What is Goalmaker?
Yes, so Goalmaker is the program. Within the program, there's a glide path. And that is effectively the allocation between stocks and bonds and inflation protected. It varies. It starts more growth oriented for younger participants, risk decreases. There are currently three glide paths. There's a conservative, a moderate, and aggressive. The moderate is the default. So any participant coming into the plan who does not actively make an election is defaulted to the program. We talked last quarter, this board is the fiduciary to all three of those glide paths. So you all are responsible for the decision, how much stocks, how much bonds, using active leads and passive. That decision lies within the board. And so about six years ago, six or seven years ago, the board reviewed that, adopted a custom glide path. And that's what's in place today. So it's important to continue to review and say, hey, is this? We start by saying, is this suitable? Is this reasonable? What the board has found was that, yes, this has served participants well. We also identified some things.
We adopted a custom glide path.
Yes.
Which looks like the three?
Each one is customized for. So instead of just saying, hey, somebody off the shelf, get us a glide path, it's specific to these participants. So other Empower clients might have a different, or do, might they do have separate stock bond mix?
Okay.
Implementation.
And it serves us well?
Yes, it serves you well. There were a couple of things in the analysis that made us want to take a deeper dive to see, okay, will this continue to be the best option for participants? So a few things that stood out to us. One is the average tenure. So when we think about the allocation of stocks to bonds, one of the objectives is, will participants have enough when they retire? And so some of that money is coming from the plan, some is coming from the DB plans, some from social security, and of course, there's probably outside assets that we can't see. When this analysis was done, the assumption was that a participant would spend the bulk of their career in the system and thus accrue a pretty hefty defined benefit income or an income from the defined benefit plan. What we're finding is participants are spending less time, their tenure is lower. We expect that means that their benefit, that their, or their, basically their paycheck from the DB plan is going to be lower than some of those initial assumptions. So that's something that we think warrants revisiting. We're seeing the average tenure much lower than what was assumed when this was designed. We're also seeing very.
Which means they're also at less time in the glide path. That's right.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Which I'm assuming is consistent because it's generational, people are staying less.
We are. This is a trend we're seeing across. This is not North Carolina specific. We're seeing this across our client base and our state plans. The other thing we noticed is we had two different savings groups. So we looked at the average balances. So if you take all of them and divide it by that number, it's over here. And if you go across and say, what's the one in the middle? It's over here, they're very different. And we saw a lot of participants clustered around two different groups. We've got two different savings levels and patterns. And so that makes us want to take a deeper dive to say, okay, does the current, the re glide path structure, how is that serving each of those populations? So again, what we found and what we recommended last quarter was we need to do a deeper analysis here to see, is this optimal going forward? And so you all said, yes, we'd like to see that, and that's why we're here today. To your point, yes, this could be a one piece exercise where we come back and we do all that deep dive and say, here's what we found. And you all might say, we still think that this is optimal, and then we're done. We might come back and you might say, you know what? This is, we think that we could do better for participants going forward. We want to redo the glide path, and that's going to take more work. So we structured our proposal in phases. It's important to us that we don't charge you for work that you may not need, and that's why we broke it up. So we're not going to assume that you're going to go all the way to the most complex redesigning, rebuilding everything. That may or may not happen, we don't know. So when Jeff put the budget together, he said, okay, what's the most possible work that we might do in taking the maximum ranges and put that in the budget so that there are no surprises? The first phase of that that's on the table today is much smaller. So the initial proposal today is $45,000 to go through the initial exercise of taking that deep dive into existing glide paths. So digging deeper into the DB plans, taking a look at those benefits, applying that to the participant base to get a better sense of, okay, what do we really expect in retirement? How much is coming from here? So for example, is the conservative glide path going to help participants save enough to revisit that? So we want to take a deeper dive there. We also want to take a look at the different asset classes. So we know Empower has expanded the number of steps, if you will, on that glide path. So how does that impact how we're evaluating the glide path? So that's new and different, and something to consider. We also want to look at, do we have the right asset classes? Do we need more? So taking a really deep dive into, are there things that we can be doing better? And then we also have gotten the question over the years, and we think it's important for the board to consider options to say, here's Goalmaker. The other option is target date funds that are used by a number of plans. And so what's the difference between the two? Which one is still optimal? Again, we're not recommending any sort of a change, but we do think as fiduciaries, it's important to revisit those options from time to time. So those are the two steps of this analysis. And again, we might come to the end of this and say, we're actually still very comfortable. We think that this is warranted. But having been six years since this plan was designed, recognizing a number of changes, we feel confident that the fee is less than a tenth of a basis point of the planned assets. And this is 50% of participant assets and the default. We feel like this analysis will be beneficial. We feel strongly it will add more value than that one tenth of one basis point, which is why we are bringing that to the board's attention.
So what part of that first tranche, the $45,000 tranche? What part of the, have you already done? As I was listening to you, it sounds like you've already done a lot of that analysis already.
No, we did enough to find that we need to dig deeper. So we have not gone deep into the DB plan analysis. We recognize that there are different savings rate. We have averages. We want to take deeper into that to see, okay, we want to go to a more granular level of participant tenure, for example.
So and really what we did was, we looked at suitability. Are the allocations that you have suitable for participants? Sure, yes. We can put our check mark on that and say, yes. Are they optimal? Are they optimized to what kind of participant outcomes are? That's going to take some further digging and some further evaluations. And it is very quantitatively, you know, heavy. So, you know, and it's going to take a considerable amount of time to dig into those two different tiers that Elizabeth mentioned. So that's, that's what, you know, the characterization of what we've already done is we've looked at suitability. But we think, and also to just maybe mention why now? With the migration to Empower, the tiers have now changed. Whereas you all were an earlier adopter.
Find what a tier is.
So the tiers of, if you go into, if you were to go into Goalmaker off the shelf 10 years ago, you would have three options. Do you want conservative, moderate, aggressive? And those tiers, the nodes of that glide path only changed four times. So it, you know, 16 years to retirement, it would take a big chunk out of equity and put it into fixed income. And then it, I think it was 10 years to retirement, again, a big chunk of equity. So you all changed that and said, you know what? There's a lot of sequencing risk and there's a lot of, you know, risk that if I have a birthday a month apart, I may have a wildly different outcome. So you said, let's, let's make more jumps and fewer kind of, you know, smaller sizes. So you all expanded the number of tiers that you have, the number of different model portfolios. And you were an early adopter of that. Well, fast forward to today.
How many tiers do we have now?
Eight tiers, I believe.
Nine.
Nine, nine, thank you. So.
Based on age.
So if I'm a participant.
So a tier is an age.
Yes, correct.
If I'm a participant, I could say I have zero to five years to retirement, or I have 10 to 15. That's where the participant comes in and says, okay, this is where I fit. And then it adjusts on their age. So when we talk about the tier, it's that.
Yeah.
Gap of retirement years.
So, and, or we could call them age groupings. But so now Empower has, has said, you know what? For everyone, we're going to allow 15 different age groupings. Is it 14? 14, thank you. So we're going to allow 14. But you're, even though there are 14 different age groupings, your allocations are staying the same. So there's some enhanced flexibility that you all are not currently using that we think you should at least consider to, again, make those incremental jumps smaller where you can. So that, that is, that is another impetus of why now, why you need to look at.
I have, this is Lorraine, this is Lorraine, I had a question. So are those now, instead of five years, are they now three?
There's, there are five years. But where the changes have occurred is in the, kind of the longer dated vintages, so the younger age increments, and then also in the post-retirement. They're, it continued to scale down in post-retirement, if I'm not mistaken.
So do you, correct.
As a fiduciary, my belief would be we have the responsibility to make sure the fund managers are performing against their peer group, fees are reasonable, et cetera. I wouldn't think we'd have fiduciary responsibility on an outcome because that's going to be impacted by two things. How much money is somebody sitting aside and watch the time horizon? We can do things to help that, but we can't control that.
And that, agreed, you're not responsible for that outcome, but you do have the fiduciary responsibility to review that asset allocation for reasonableness. And so the savings, those are all inputs that we use to evaluate the glide path to help you determine, should it be 100% equity? Should it be 80% equity at one age? So you're right, the outcome is not the fiduciary obligation, but understanding the projections for those components helps inform what goes into that.
A reason, like my question, I heard you mention a couple of times, that you want to look at outcomes and will somebody have enough money to retire? And absolutely, that's an objective, but there's only so much this board and staff can do to that.
And sorry if I confused the issue there. I guess what I meant by that.
Well, I'm easily confused, so don't apologize.
The reason I brought that up was that helps inform, should somebody have 80% equity? Should somebody have 60% equity? So looking at the expectations helps us see how much risk should we be taking? What's reasonable and appropriate from a risk and return perspective? Thinking about the impact of the allocation downstream. Thank you.
So, yes. I was going to say, does staff have a recommendation on this?
So from my point of view, and you heard that about, about 50% of the assets are in this. When you look at the people, about 70% of the participants are in this, and about 95% of all new people adopt this service. So from, so from my perspective, it seems like such a small amount of money for us to ensure that it's not only suitable, but we're also trying to optimize that.
Thank you.
Just to tie something in that the Empower folks said this morning, you used the term financial wellness, which I look as a synonym of fiscal literacy. And part of the problem writ large, and I don't know enough about our participants, but fiscal literacy is a problem in the United States. And what you're trying to do is look at the underlying assumptions to make sure that the fiscal literacy of those decisions that were made years ago currently fit today.
Yes, and if I were to just take that one step further with participants. So we, we'd like to see more participants in these participant-driven plans invest in professionally managed options. We're not all Charlie Munger. Sooner we can all realize that, the better. So we like 50% participation. That's great. It could, so that, and what we call the do it for me option. They have come to you and they said, you know, hey, we don't know what we want to invest in. You do it for me. And so now this is you all's chance to influence, like, what are we going to do? What are we going to do?
Other questions or comments?
This is Lorraine.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, no, we're not responsible for outcomes. But, you know, the basic that we are responsible for, or a basic, is are we allocating appropriate in general asset allocation for the age of someone? And how far, actually, not just the age, but really, how far are they from retirement? And of course, that's, it would be lovely if there were a hard and fast on that. Unfortunately, it is part art and part science. But, you know, to try the best we can, and it is time, I think, to review that, you know, as basic as it is to our obligation. I think it makes sense. And particularly because we do have, for anybody who's not in the industry on that, it's, target date funds are typical in just about any fiduciary plan that I see. Anybody who comes to me as an advisor and they have a 401K and I'm looking at the 401K investment options to make sure their asset allocation looks more or less okay. The target date fund simply say, you know, in three or five year intervals, you know, how close is somebody to retirement and therefore what's an appropriate asset allocation? What I, what it, what to me distinguishes the Goalmaker plan that we have set up or structure is that on top of that, we overlay for somebody to be able to say, I am. of that, we overlay for somebody to be able to say, I am generally a conservative investor or a moderate investor or an aggressive investor. And, and I think that's very useful. It's not just something that is, is a gimmick for us to talk about. I think it's, it's really a distinguishing factor. Now, obviously, that brings in, you know, difficulties, but it's on in terms of complexity. But it, it does make, leave it so that there's more for us to look at and maybe takes us a bit more time than, than most. And this seems to be time well spent, in my opinion.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions for me. Our ETFs, but target date, TDFs, basis points cheaper, generally speaking? I mean, can we eliminate all of our managers and just have target date funds for that percentage of the people that are in Goalmaker? So you wouldn't eliminate all your managers? You would still recommend you offer, for those that want to do it themselves?
Right.
You, you still have a core menu that they can choose from. So.
But if it's in, if it's in glide path and Goalmaker, they will, if the only option inside a glide path was TDFs, was that a problem?
Are you asking, is there a cheaper option?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, yeah.
There are some target dates that would be cheaper. There are some that would be more expensive. There, there do exist target dates.
Okay.
That would be less expensive to the participant than Goalmaker, yes.
And intuitively, do you, do you, do you see any outcome, if people are staying in the DB plan less, that means that we're going to be saying they need to take more risk here? There's no other, there's no other what conclusion, right?
That is generally where it leads you is they, in order to bump up that potential for, you know, an income replacement that, that works is, yes, you have to take more risks.
So given what we know, which is people are staying in DB less, that means what you're going to be coming back and recommending possibly is more risk. I mean, there's no other conclusion.
If folks aren't in the DB plan, hopefully they'd be putting more money in the other side, too. So if they're allocating more into, say, that 6% that we put in the DB plan, if they put that 401k, they wouldn't necessarily need to take more.
Well, that's why they need to.
But they wouldn't be doing that here.
I guess, yeah, I mean, it'd be wherever that was, right?
Right.
I mean, obviously, if you're a paid participant, you're in the DB plan.
Right.
Unless that goes away, which, I hope it doesn't.
Do you anticipate any, look at this in stages.
Okay.
Stage one is your initial recommendation. You, do you anticipate the initial recommendation coming back and saying, y'all need to stay the course? You were ahead of your time. You don't need to overcomplicate things. Do you, is there anything intuitively that tells you that you're going to come back and say, we're just, we're good, we're okay?
There is a potential for that. And I would say we're, you know, the asterisk is what I mentioned in those early and late stages of those allocations. So as well at 75 years plus in age, or, you know, call it 40 and pre-40, those allocations, we think you all need to consider offering some change there.
Okay.
But for the most part, you could, you could look at our forward-looking expectations, marry that with the, the demographics and say, yeah, that these are optimized allocations. These still, they still work. But we, we think too, they're just, you all, you just need to know what the options are. And so you mentioned target date funds, and, you know, that, that remains a viable option and, and something that you all can consider. Or you can consider staying the course here with, with Goalmaker. They, they each have their pros and cons.
We talked about this last quarter as well, is with Empower's acquisition of Prudential, we've been watching the commitment to Goalmaker. So is this something that we expect they'll continue to maintain? Definitely, just for the near term. So that's another consideration and why it's important to, ahead of the curve, take a look at other options as well.
You mean, is Goalmaker proprietary to us? Or say it was proprietary to Empower?
It was a Prudential system that Empower didn't have. Empower gained Goalmaker through the Prudential acquisition. So the natural question is, well, Empower didn't develop this, Prudential did. So what is the commitment going forward from Empower to maintaining and continuing to include and invest in the technology and the investment?
So Empower was bigger than Prudential when that acquisition took place, right? Empower took over Prudential, which was smaller. So when Empower didn't have Goalmaker, what is y'all's commitment to Goalmaker then?
Answer.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, we put a significant amount of money in upgrading it. So we took Goalmaker that you all had. And I think one of the points is that there's more optionality now than you had before. Right? So I think our commitment's there. We are committed to, matter of fact, we built out for it. If we didn't want to, we probably would have had a great opportunity to move away from it, or at least not to upgrade it. So we literally upgraded it. But to be fair, though, we are not offering it to new clients because it's something that we're, we're leaving to the, to the Prudential book that we, that we did kind of take over. We did it, we did enhance it. We are saying that we are committed to it. I mean, I, who knows the future forever, but for now, we are absolutely committed to keeping it. We've been upgraded it.
So you didn't have it before the acquisition?
No, it's one of the things, there's a few things that, many things.
You're not offering it to new clients. That's not a good sign. You never, you didn't have it before. You're not offering it.
It's a different version of it. It's not a Goalmaker exact version. They have an asset allocation tool that they allow, that is, that was embedded on their system, that was not as good as Goalmaker, candidly. We were committed to keeping our Prudential clients, the product. We've been upgraded it as we moved it over. Over time, who knows? We may open it up. At this point, we've decided that it's, it's available to our Prudential clients. We upgraded it. We're committed. We don't know the, what the future will be for new clients.
So how big, how big is Goalmaker as a percentage of Empower today?
I don't, I don't know the stats on that. I mean.
Do you think it's 5% or 50% or 20%? Of all your AUM, how much is managed under Goalmaker?
I wouldn't want to guess. It's limited to the Prudential book. And I would say that the vast majority of Prudential plans had Goalmaker and still have Goalmaker today.
So what percentage of your book is Prudential?
So Prudential overall was like, what, 300 billion? And Empower today is 1.4 trillion. And maybe, maybe 50% of those 300 billion were in Goalmaker. So what's?
So Prudential is a third of Empower.
Yep.
10%.
10%. So, yeah, roughly probably.
300 out of 1.4?
Only half of the 300.
150 million out of 1.4 billion.
All right, 1.4.
Way ahead. I mean, they were faster.
We're not suggesting that this is going way tomorrow. But again, I think it's our job as fiduciaries to look ahead and say, what are our options? And to be diligent that we're seeing that. We do trust you, we do believe you, but also we have to stay, we also have to stay ahead of that and just be exploring options.
But if they decide to stop supporting Goalmaker, this board's got a lot of work ahead of it, right?
Yes.
Well, I'm not in favor of this because I, I think, I just have an intuition based on my personality where I think this is headed. But I think I can read the board. So I'll make a motion.
You want to do that?
I thought you would.
On the first one?
On the first tranche.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve what I think is staff's recommendation to proceed with the first phase of this and explore what we don't know that we might uncover each day and move forward.
Second.
Second. I've always felt responsible to tell the board that I'm going to vote. That's what I'll be doing. But my job is let the board do its work, which is also what I'm doing.
Okay. Motion's second on table. Any further discussion?
This is Lorraine coming to comment, and that's discussion.
Of course.
I think even, while I don't want to spend money that we don't have to, that's part of our fiduciary duty as well. I think even if we have a pretty good idea of where it's going to land from a fiduciary standpoint, given changes in the industry, changes at, at Empower, and changes in demographics and overall in the industry, changes in the long-range, like, by which I mean, people who are older, once we start talking about people who are, let's say, 70, 75 and older, it's, it's becoming something rather standard in the industry to take a look at that now, particularly given some, whether there may or may not be some long-term structural changes in the bond market, which is generally where people who are later in their retirement are, you know, perhaps overweighted. That, that's something we're seeing in general that I, or that I've been seeing as an advisor with target, you know, just seeing target date funds all over the place. Just based on all of that, I think it, I will respectfully disagree, Mr. Treasurer, and say that I believe we should go ahead and take a look at all of it and be able to document it. And then see where we go from there. So I, I'm, you know, in candidness, then I'm, I'm going to vote, I will vote yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Treasurer Falwell?
Are you sure?
Shavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
Jane Plumston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Uh.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
And Robert Hillman?
The eyes have it. So thank you very much. Thank you for being here. We'll now go to the two Chris's. Do you have a radio show or something?
You could.
Is there a radio show call?
Yes.
Before we, no, I'm sorry. Before we, go ahead, Treasurer, this is Lorraine. I'm going to need to, to exit the, the meeting for the rest of the, for the rest of the time.
Okay. Thank you for joining us.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.
We have a compliance update. This is Chris Anlon.
So for the investment policies and prohibited holdings, supplemental retirement plan staff identified one prohibited holding subject to divestment. We identified Unilever DLC, which is on the company's boycotting Israel prohibited investment list. All managers were promptly notified back in December 22, 2023, and all relevant managers have been instructed to divest from prohibited holdings in a 180-day period, starting December 21st, 2023. Supplemental retirement plan staff is diligently overseeing investment manager portfolios to ensure complete and timely divestment from this prohibited holding.
And we're still within that 180-day period. So that runs out like mid-June-ish. So we're, we're making sure that any managers, they had 180 days to divest. So we're ensuring that, that's the case. And I don't remember if we said this last time. So there's been some chatter around Unilever and the divestment of Ben &amp; Jerry's, which is really what drove this, what drove them getting on the list to begin with. But until something actually happens and Unilever actually sells Ben &amp; Jerry's or whatever they're going to do with it, you know, we can't even start looking at whether or not we should put, or take Unilever off the list and be able to invest in that.
Can we steal eat ice cream?
That, that's your personal decision.
Not supposed to be able to buy it from North Carolina governmental entities. This is state law, it's not our law.
But yeah, but so, you know, in the event Unilever does something with this and divests themselves from Ben &amp; Jerry's, we'll evaluate at that point in time and then potentially edit the list. But it likely wouldn't be for probably a year and a half at the earliest. Just wanted to put that out there. Just want to hit the last two items.
With executive order, continue daily compliance testing for prohibited holdings identified Communist Chinese military industrial companies related presidential executive order 032. No SRP investment managers were invested in CCM's Cs during the quarter in investment guidelines. As always, supplemental retirement plan staff continues to monitor investment manager guidelines on a daily basis. There were no material issues during the quarter.
Yeah, thank you. Treasurer, you got anything?
That's everything.
Thanks.
Thank you, both. We'll adjourn in just a moment. Before doing so, we have a public comment section. Does anyone sign up for public comment?
Okay.
Hearing none, I hear by the end, public comment section be closed. I want to thank all of our staff here for making all this jump up on the table and not just this meeting, but lots of other meetings that go on this, go on this room. I appreciate the board's latitude to have to step out to, you know, another board to call for Global Transport a few minutes ago. Thank you for that. As I mentioned earlier, there's going to be a lot of talk about Federal Savers Match Program. Jeff did a little piece for me. I'm not sure I understand it. I don't know how they're going to be able to keep up with this at the federal level. But it's meant to give people a savers credit for participating in, in retirement systems. So there's an article in PNI about it. Federal Savers Match Program could spur 8.5 million new people to save. There's a lot of complexities, income limits, lots going on about the Savers Match Programs with next treasurer and, as importantly, this SRP board will have to figure out how all this G-hauls in with what we're trying to do. Well, with a defined contribution plan. So anyway, just stay tuned. And I'm Joe Lorraine and Greg and others in the business. We're starting to get deep into this.
I'm scratching the surface, sir, like you. I'm confused.
Okay.
I've always stated I'm easily confused, so.
And I will hand you these two documents.
All right.
Before we go around the horn, does anybody have anybody that's joining us online that they'd like to say? Mr. Controller, I'm cleaning out my office, so I'm sending a lot of stuff your way that I thought Controller would like to have. So.
Very much appreciate that, Treasurer Falwell. And my term officially ends at the end of June. I'm happy to serve month by month or however that process works. But if that is my, if this is my last meeting, it's been nothing but a pleasure working with everybody here. Thank you.
I'd like to also say, this is Shavella. My term actually also ends the end of June, unless it's extended. But I've enjoyed working with each of you.
Hang on just a minute, because I actually asked this question before we got started.
So we actually had reached out to the person who handles all this for, for office, and we've not really heard back on how this is going to be handled. So I don't know if there's.
You mean from our office?
Yes.
You haven't heard back from people in our office?
Yes, sir.
We just walk up there and ask?
You haven't heard back from SEI.
Oh, SEI, excuse me.
Okay. So, all right, how many?
We have three.
I mean, I will say goodbye to folks properly. That's what I want to do. So you have how many?
I believe three was Nels, Shavella, and Steve.
Okay.
I just got reappointed.
All right. Shavella, who appointed you? The governor?
The governor. The governor.
Okay. Is the governor reappointing you?
Well, I sent an email to ask that question, but the person who would give the answer is not in the office.
All right, Jim.
Yeah.
Reed can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that everyone continues to serve until they're replaced. So it's not like a month by month thing.
That's what my letter indicated.
Okay. Well, you had to come back on for a few moments if you get replaced before the next meeting. Is that fair to all three of you?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure.
You won't get to per diem, though. For the sandwich.
I didn't get it anyway.
Diem who are not on board. Grabbing coke and a banana. I mean, the controller may not be happy with us paying people per diem who are not on the board. Anyway, we'll have more to say about all of you going forward. And so as we close, I know that oftentimes in the grief process, especially in our society, unknown is unloved. And I attended the service of Officer Alden Elliott. So sometimes unknown is unloved because you don't know what someone looks like. So this is a picture of Officer Alden Elliott. And I got to meet the other family of the Department of Corrections officer who was also murdered, Sam Pelosi and his family were actually at the Elliott service in Catalina County. So as we adjourn today, we will do so in honor of Sam Pelosi and William Elliott, who were participants in our plan. And Joshua A. Air, who was a Charlotte Mecklenburg, police officer, I presume is also a participant in our plan. And US Marshal Thomas Weeks, who was obviously a federal employee. In doing so, I just want to read a point that Alden's son wrote, who was 12 years old. Because this happened just a few days before Mother's Day. And so now we have this family, this community, their team. Widows of these slain officers who went through their first Mother's Day without the father of their children. And now will be going through the first Father's Day without their children's father and their husband. So this is written by Thea, who is 12 years old. My daddy is a hero. He died getting the bad guys. That's what he was good at. He is a Marine. He is a police officer. He is kind and patient. He keeps my mom and I safe. He is my daddy, the best daddy. We love playing video games together. He really likes Mario, Zelda and Matrioid, Return of Samus. We collect Pokemon cards. I have a Charizard that he helped me get graded. He and I have watched every Star Wars movie and series. My daddy loves playing and watching baseball and his favorite team is the Dodgers. He's an expert marksman. Perfect score every time. For my 12th birthday, he bought me a dirt bike. He bought himself one, too, so that we could ride together. I will learn to ride it. And one day, Daddy, we will ride together. He was the best man I'll ever know, and I hope to be just like him. So I make a motion that we adjourn in honor of these four officers and.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Shabella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson? She left. Jane Clumston?
Aye.
Bob Shea?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
And Steve Bean?
Aye.
We're hereby adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.